Okay, it's four thirty. I would like to call this Finance Committee meeting to order. Item two, roll call. Tom Barney.
Here.
And Eric Brown.
Here.
And myself, Michael Loth, is here. Agenda revisions and approval.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any discussion? None. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, approved minutes. Approval of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Eric Brown, second by Tom Barney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. New business, item five. A, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three financial audit review. Wendy Unger from Baker Tilly. And you're already at the microphone. Thank you.
Nope, I'm good. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Oh, sorry. Uh, thank you for having me here this evening. Um, you should have in front of you, two bound documents, the audited financial statements and a reporting and insights document. I also believe you have that as part of your electronic packet. But I will be using what's up on the screen to go through both of those documents at a relatively high level. This is really a summary of that information. Uh, we'll talk about audit results. We'll go through some very high-level summary financial information. Um, we'll talk about a couple other items that I believe are important for you to be aware of that are included within your audited statements. And uh, then I'll open it up for questions. If you do have questions as I go through, please feel free to ask. I'll do my best to address those as we move through the presentation. Uh, so next slide and next slide. So on the first slide, uh, one more slide. Sorry about that. Uh, so on the, the first slide here is where I highlight the audit results. Um, the objective of the audit was to issue an opinion on the financial statements for the district. We've done that. We've included within your audited financial report a clean, unmodified opinion. That is the same type of opinion that you've received in the past and is the highest level of assurance that you can obtain from us as your auditors. A very normal opinion. There were no new governmental accounting standards or GASP's that were uh, implemented during the year. There were, uh, there was one that was effective, uh, GASP ninety-six. We spoke about this last year related to subscription-based IT arrangements. There were none that were material, um, and therefore that standard did not need to be implemented. But going back, a clean, unmodified opinion means that the information contained within the audited statements is believed to be materially accurate. The disclosures that were required to include within your footnotes under the standards have been uh, included and that generally accepted accounting principles have been adhered to. So again, a very positive uh, opinion result. On the next slide, uh, this is where I begin some very high-level financial information, and this is information that is extracted from your audited financial statements. Uh, so you can see on this slide, this is your general fund. So this is your day-to-day operating fund. What I presented here is a budget to actual comparison uh, for the district. Um, you can see within your revenue category, forty-seven point two, almost forty-seven point three million of actual compared to a forty-six point four million dollar budget. So you were over budget by eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and obviously over budget in your revenue category is a favorable variance. Uh, two very large uh, pieces of that. One is your investment income came in two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars more than budget, so a very good a year from a investment standpoint. And then your federal revenue came in four hundred and thirty thousand dollars over budget related to the back-to-school supplemental aid and the Kids Get Ahead grants uh, that were received by the district. On the expenditure side, when you look at that, forty-five point nine million of actual compared to a forty-six point four million dollar budget. So you were under budget on the expense side. So again, a favorable variance uh, of roughly four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the main contributing functional areas related to that was your administration category, building and grounds, and your pupil transportation categories. So overall, when you put together your FY twenty-three budget, you budgeted to break even. Uh, so zero addition to fund balance. You ultimately for twenty twenty-three added almost one point three million to fund balance and ended the year at seven point six, almost seven point seven million. So very favorable results within your general fund. Of that seven point seven million dollars of fund balance, there's various components, and I've broken those down, uh, broken those out down below. There's a very small portion that's non-spendable, that's some prepaid and inventory items. So the cash is gone. Uh, but you haven't recognized the expense for those, so that gets set aside. There's three hundred and fifty thousand that is restricted. This is uh, related to your self-insurance. So those are monies that have been set aside for that purpose. They're restricted. They can only be used for that purpose. Um, you have four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that is committed. Those are monies that have been set aside uh, for your uh, debt service payments on some passive debt. So those are monies that have been uh, committed by resolution. Uh, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand of fund balance is assigned. Those are unspent grant monies. So they're sitting in fund balance and are awaiting expenditure. Um, so those get pulled out. And then the remaining balance, six point one million, is your unassigned. This is your working capital contingency monies. Those represent roughly thirteen percent of your operating budget. Uh, we typically look at uh, for that to be somewhere between the ten and twenty-five percent. So maybe a little bit on the lower side, but still a very positive result for your general fund uh, during the year, especially with that assignment and committed portions that have been set aside. On the next slide, um, I've highlighted the other uh, funds of the district. Uh, your special education fund is the first column there. Eight point seven million of revenue, eight point six million, or I'm sorry, eight point seven of expenditures. Um, zero fund balance. Uh, that fund can't have fund balance because keep in mind that your revenue source there is federal and state funds. And then the remaining portion to pay any uh, residual is coming in from your debt, uh, I'm sorry, from your general fund. So just to put that in perspective, roughly three point six million of that revenue comes from federal and state programs, and the remaining balance is funded uh, by your general fund. Uh, the next column is your non-referendum uh, debt service fund. Oh, nope, stay on that, still on that slide. Next column. Uh, two point five million of taxes, two point six million of expenses. Again, this is non-referendum debt. Used a little bit of fund balance and had a hundred and seventy-six thousand as of the end of the year. Likewise, in your next column, uh, your referendum uh, fund, ten point five million of revenue. And ended the year at ten point five two million. Uh, both of those funds are restricted, can only be used for debt service, and as you accumulate those resources to make future debt payments. Uh, the next column is your capital project fund. Uh, you had six hundred thousand dollars of revenue. Uh, a good portion of that is taxes. There was a, a transfer in, uh, from your general fund of a hundred and fifty thousand for the year. You spent almost three hundred thousand, and that was on various uh, projects during the year. You had some boiler work, you had some water softener, uh, water damage elevators, that type of activity. Uh, but still, uh, added three hundred thousand to fund balance and ended the year at six hundred and ninety-six thousand. Uh, the last column that's presented here are your non-major funds. So these are the remaining funds, and as you can see, I broke those out on the bottom. These are your food service uh, fund, your trust fund or your fund twenty-one, and then your community service fund. Um, those funds collectively had two point nine million dollars of revenue. Um, as you would expect, most of that revenue, or a good portion of the revenue, is flowing through your food food service program. One point seven million of that activity is food. Uh, likewise, on the expenditure side, two point six million of expenditures. Uh, one point six million um, is coming uh, through from your food service program. So collectively, those three funds added two hundred and thirty-nine thousand to fund balance, ended the year at almost two point two million. And then I broke it down below, just to put it a, a, again, that two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar addition. Uh, your food service fund balance went up a hundred and sixty-two thousand, so a, a good year within your uh, food service fund. Uh, your trust fund, which again is your tw- uh, fund twenty-one donation fund, that type of activity, that went down roughly twenty thousand. And then your community service fund, which is your fund eighty, uh, that ended the year at four hundred eleven thousand, and that was up a hundred thousand over the previous year. So again, very favorable results in the funds of the district. Uh, moving on to the next page, uh, the last page that I'll just present some very quick financial information, and this is where I'm going to give you some page numbers. Um, just again to look at, at your convenience. So uh, some additional information, things that I think are important. Uh, the first point there is the capacity and ability to borrow. This is ten percent of your equalized value equates to four hundred and sixty-one million. So that is what you can borrow in the uh, in general obligation debt. As of the end of the year, you had eighty-seven point six million outstanding. So the difference between those two is your remaining capacity to borrow, which is roughly three hundred and seventy-four uh, million dollars. So a very large capacity to borrow, so very solid borrowing capacity. That is found on page twenty-one um, in your footnotes. The next item is your total OPEB liability. So these are the post-employment benefits that are offered uh, to your employees. Uh, this can be found on page thirty of your footnotes. There's an extensive footnote related to the, the calculations and the details that surround the OPEB liability. Keep in mind, uh, the OPEB liability is provided to us via your actuary. So we uh, base a, a lot of the disclosures and the calculations on information that we obtained from them. Um, as of the end of the year, eleven point three million of uh, outstanding uh, liability uh, based on current actuarial assumptions. And that is actually a decrease of seven hundred thousand over the previous year. Uh, the next item, this is the employee retirement system. So this is your participation in WRS. Uh, again, another extensive footnote on page twenty-four. Uh, this is also data that is provided to us by the, the retirement system via their actuary. Um, as of the end of the year, the district did have a eight point two million dollar liability. Now, in the past several years, we've talked about this being an asset. Uh, but for uh, June thirtieth of twenty-three, this swung to a liability. Keep in mind, this is your participation or your proportionate share of the system. That system is typically a hundred percent funded. There's times that that will drop, a few percentage points under that. There's times that it's over a hundred percent funded, all based on market. Also, another thing to keep in mind is the, the information and the presentation within your statement and the figure that I have shared with you is based on a twelve thirty-one twenty-two study or actuarial information. So we're, we're six months off from your, your end, and if you look back to twenty twenty-two and how uh, the market did, not very positive, and hence the reason that that system was unfunded at the end of uh, twelve thirty-one twenty-two, and hence the reason for your liability. As I've mentioned, when you have an asset, you don't have any right to that asset, and when you have a liability, you have no current obligation to pay that. It's just really, where is the system from a funding standpoint as of that snapshot in time, and that will fluctuate on an annual basis, again, driven by market. Uh, the last item I've included on this page is the federal and state compliance audit. The district does expend two point nine nine million of federal funds, so a very large uh, figure, eighteen point nine million of state funds. Um, and because you expend over seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal money, you are required to have what's referred to as a federal compliance audit, a uniform guidance audit, a single audit. All of those terms, terms are synonymous. Um, we've, what that means is we are required to select certain programs and test those for compliance with the requirements of those programs from the federal government. Uh, so during uh, twenty twenty-three, um, we looked at both Medicaid and your ESER programs. As you can imagine, your ESER programs have significant activity. Um, and then uh, on the state side, we actually looked at four programs that are dictated to us by uh, DPI, your general aid, your special education, uh, that type of activity. Very happy to say, no compliance findings were noted. So um, the programs that were uh, reviewed and audited were in compliance with the state stat- uh, with the state and federal compliance requirements. On the last page, uh, so the next slide, uh, the last page of information I just want to quickly share with you. Uh, this is information that is contained within that other document. So it's the reporting and insights document that we prepare as part of the audit. That's a document where we share comments and recommendations. We have a requirement to share if we do have any material weaknesses to share some of our standard communication. Uh, very happy to say, included within that document, under our required communications, there are no longer any mark material weaknesses noted in uh, internal controls. That is a huge uh, accomplishment. And the organization and uh, Brittany and her team should be commended for that. That's not something that um, happens very often. So that means no material journal entries at part of the audit process. No internal control findings, um, no segregation of duties issues noted. So again, very positive. Um, we have included in there, uh, the second bullet point here where I ca- uh, comment on other deficiencies. There are two items in there from the IT side. Um, really more best practices, making sure you do a practice rest- restoration of your backups to make sure that your backup of your financial data actually works if and when you would uh, hopefully ever, or hopefully not ever need. Uh, but just again, a, a couple best practices, nothing of any magnitude, just really um, items to consider. Um, and then included within the required communication section, a lot of data, this is the, the section that we share. Um, some of the items that we need to include under our standards. Again, uh, probably the largest portion of that section highlights the estimates that are included in your statements. I've highlighted those. OPEB pension, uh, the other very large one would be depreciation. Um, all of those are estimated figures, but we review as part of the audit process. But again, nothing unordinary uh, or unexpected in that section. Uh, lastly, the management representation is included in that report. Um, that's representations that are, are again, normal and customary and shared with us as part of the audit process that's on a district letterhead. Very last page, so on the next page of the handout, I do include my um, email address, my direct line. Happy to talk with any of you regarding our process. If you have any questions you want to discuss in length, but I'd also be happy to answer any questions you might have currently.
I do not have any questions. Um, I'll be reading over the paper copy as I hope the rest of the board will. And uh, for the rest of the board, if you have any questions now, great. If not, once you read over some of the material, if you have any questions, I would appreciate if you uh, email Wendy, please copy Brittany and I on that email so we know what's going on. Anyone uh, this evening? Questions while we have Wendy here? I would say thank you. It sounds like a great report. We have a great bris- business manager, so I was, this is what we were hoping for. Thank you very much, and uh, thanks for presenting.
You're welcome. Have a great night. Thank you.
Yep, you too.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to uh, item five B, twenty twenty-four mileage and meal reimbursement rates. And uh, that's Brittany Alton Dorf.
Tonight, I'm coming to the Finance Committee and the Board later on this evening for approval for the mileage reimbursement rate, as well as the reimbursement rate if a employee would be at a conference or traveling for breakfast, lunch, and dinner reimbursement. Um, in January of every year, I will be bringing this to the committee and the Board for approval. This should have been done in past years. Um, and we um, recently found it in one of our Board policies, so moving forward, we will make sure that this is completed. Um, the January first of twenty-three uh, mileage amount was point six five five, and starting in January of twenty-four. It is uh, for point six seven cents per mile, um, based on the Internal Revenue Service. So I am asking for the committee and the Board to approve that increase. And then next, I am asking for the rates of twelve dollars and fifty cents for reimbursement for breakfast, twelve dollars and fifty cents for the reimbursement for lunch, and twenty dollars for reimbursement of dinner. Those are our current rates. I don't believe those rates have been changed in over ten years. Um, so I am asking currently that they stay that rate um, for the committee today. Any questions?
Tom?
Well, given the inflation that we've seen in the past few years, I don't know that rates for meals from ten years ago are still sufficient. Um, if you attend a roadshow or a conference, things like that, I think even if you got a modest lunch of like a burger, fries, and a beverage, you're going to be well over twelve dollars and fifty cents. So I would propose, I mean, I think the breakfast number is probably pretty close, but for lunch, I would propose seventeen fifty and for dinner, twenty-two fifty. Okay, so it'd be a five dollar increase for lunch and then a two dollar and fifty cent increase for dinner.
Right, I don't disagree. Uh, for someone who travels, no, and then I get it. Brittany, what do you think?
I am fine with the adjustment. I just want the committee to be aware that it is, I don't know the correct term, not to be one-to-one necessarily because people are coming to work on a day-to-day basis, paying for their own lunches when they're at work. So I don't know if the reimbursement is necessarily a one-to-one that you would normally spend on your daily routine at work. But I understand where you're coming from on the inflation rate over the period of time since it's been changed.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if you're, if you're bringing a lunch from home, it certainly shouldn't cost you seventeen fifty. But if you're going out somewhere, I, I think it's it's going to exceed the twelve dollar fifty cent rate from ten years ago.
I would, I would just add too, that conferences we do send people to or that are attended, um, if they're on a, a very specific topic, often breakfast and lunch are included as part of the registration. Um, so dinner would be the only thing in those instances that would be reimbursed, correct, Alton Dorf?
Correct, and if breakfast and/or lunch are included and a person chooses to go out to breakfast or lunch, then not reimbursed.
Russ?
Do you have an idea of how often we're utilizing this?
The majority that I see that come across my desk don't include this. It's more of mileage reimbursement, not meal reimbursement. Um, but I don't know off the top of my head the dollar amount that we do reimburse.
I have frequency of forms coming across your, through your office for reimbursement outside of miles.
I, I see a lot of forms come across my desk regarding reimbursements, but the majority of them, I'd probably say eighty-five percent of them are probably solely for mileage.
Okay, so what do you want to do? Leave it, leave it the same, or you want to stick with your numbers, Tom?
I brought the numbers. I guess I would recommend at least increasing it slightly.
It seems like if we increase it slightly, it's a good portion of the time, it's not going to be used anyway. So maybe we should uh, increase it slightly for the case, the just-in-case. Is that, is that okay, Brittany?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the recommendation.
It's okay. Chris?
Yes.
Eric?
Um, yes, I'm just wondering, because of the breakfast and lunch being typically handled, if we take the increase for breakfast and lunch, put it on dinner, which is not typically handled.
I didn't propose an increase for breakfast. And I guess when I go out to places, I normally find the lunch and dinner prices are, it's roughly the same menu in some cases. You might find a place that may have a specific lunch menu. But, I mean, that's why I didn't do a full five dollars on the dinner menu.
Okay.
I was thinking if you go out somewhere for dinner, twenty-two fifty should be sufficient for, you know, a meal.
Right.
But, but I'm open to discussion, huh?
Well, I, I think, I think you're right, Tom, and I think Eric's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll uh, take a motion.
I'll make a motion with a positive recommendation to the full Board to approve the twenty twenty-four mileage and meal reimbursement rates of sixty-seven cents per mile, breakfast twelve dollars and fifty cents, lunch seventeen dollars and fifty cents, dinner twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay, item six A, December and January vouchers. I know there was a couple of questions.
I received three questions regarding the vouchers for this evening. The first one was regarding um, the payment to UW Green Bay College um, credit and credits for high school. There were, the question was, how many students and classes did this cover, and will we get reimbursement from the state? Um, the total dollar amount was twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. There was fifty-one students at four hundred and twenty dollars per student. Uh, there were math classes. There were three different math classes that was involved. Um, eighteen of the students took introductory to statistics, thirty-one took um, pre-calculus, and two took calculus and analytic geometry. What the Board may or may not know is that if you look at the account number, uh, there is an R in it, which means revenue. So we received the money, and we are paying it out. So we are just a wash-through. So we did receive the funds to pay this. Um, it was not funds from the state, but we did receive the revenue, and that's where we're paying it from. So we are not paying for these specific classes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Brittany, is that revenue from the state then, or?
No, it's not revenue from the state. That would be paid out of an expenditure. So we must have collected fees for these.
Oh, okay.
The next question I received was regarding um, a check for or a invoice for controllers for the Amy Bell boilers. The question was basically um, that we um, installed two boilers into Amy Bell. Um, that was through Butter Svetting. They are the company that actually installed the two boilers. There is another portion of it which was installed by train. Those are the controllers. So all our systems are controlled, they're overseen by a bigger program. So this was the program portion, not the necessary equipment of the boilers portion. Um, they were, the current controllers, similar to the current boilers, were extremely old. So the new controllers and boilers should not have any issues for up to the next twenty, twenty-five years. And the final question I received, I believe, was regarding um, annual subscriptions for I believe it is, it says annual subscriptions, and I believe this may have been Amy Bell. I could be wrong. Um, this is an annual cost paid out of our library aid for a monthly subscription of books. So the librarians pay an annual fee, list categories of books, and then the books within those categories are sent, similar to a subscription. Similar to a maga- magazine, but these are books that are then sent here, based on the categories that they list, and they pay an annual fee for them out of the library aid that we receive. And I have the list of the categories, if you'd like to know those.
There, there was one more. Um, on the, we had a uh, fee from the Washington County Sheriff's Department.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I, I apologize. So when we have a facility rental and we need supervision or police presence during the facility rental, we reach out to the Village of Germantown. If they do not have staff available during those days and times, if they're shorthanded or they don't have staff available, we then reach out to Washington County Sheriffs to see if they are able to cover the event. In this case, they were able to cover. If neither, um, we either cancel their event or we do not have police presence, because most of the time Germantown, if because most of the time Germantown, if they can't constantly be in there, they will continue to monitor and visit the event. But this instance, I'm sorry, I forgot that question. This instant, Washington County was be able to cover the event. And then we are reimbursed for that by the renter.
Okay, I just didn't recall seeing that before. And maybe it has happened before and I just didn't see it, you know. Every time you look at, you know, at the monthly voucher report, you can usually see something new that you haven't seen before. So I, does this happen often or?
Often, no, it's rare that it happens. We did increase police presence, police presence a few years ago for an incident that happened. And so we had it at every event. And then now we have had it at not, not every event. We've had certain events. So as events come for rentals, the superintendent and I speak regarding if we believe police presence needs to be constant or if they can just visit the event.
Okay, yeah, very good.
And, and usually the Village of Germantown can cover the event, so you wouldn't see this often.
Okay, good, thank you.
Would you be able to give us the categories of the books?
Sure, the categories that we were given by the librarians was, the first one is easy reading. Second is sports, elementary level. Third is fantasy slash science fiction. Next is biography, independent readers, and multicultural elementary. Those were the categories. Which books were received, I'm not aware of.
Do we keep a list of the books that we receive or they just show up and go right into the library?
I'm not aware of that, but I can look into it and have someone follow up with you.
Okay, any other questions? No?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent to payment vouchers as presented and reviewed.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay, next item. Item seven A, the December variance report. Brittany, open door, please.
In front of you tonight is the December thirty-first variance report. So the activity that the district has had in expenses and revenues for the general fund as well as the special ed fund from July first to December thirty-first. The top portion of your report is the expenses and the bottom of the report is the revenues. On December twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-three, included in this report was the retro for the employees. So you'll see that in the salaries column in both reg, in both, excuse me, general fund and the special ed fund. We are spending at the same rate as we did previous year, around the thirty-six percent of the budget spent so far in salaries. Starting in January, there will be, be adjustments to the employee benefits. So you'll see that on next month's report. Purchase services, some of the areas that have an increase is contracted services such as transportation, our second, second shift cleaning services. We did have specialized transportation that is a little higher than the previous year. An area that did decrease is non-capital purchases as well as capital purchases. You do see that we have currently, it looks like we have currently over-expensed the capital purchases line item by four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That is due to the board-approved air conditioning at Kennedy Middle School. I will be bringing, that's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that. And the other balance of that is board-approved in April. We are doing some technology and we get reimbursed by E-rate. So in April, the board did approve that we could make those purchases. Those, so those two items are encumbered, they're not spent. In February, I will be coming to the board for budget adjustments. I usually do that in January, but we're waiting for some information from the library bill. So hopefully, I didn't want to make adjustments once and then have to make them again. So I just pushed it a little further. So you'll see some expenditures and revenues that are in here that aren't budgeted for, such as Essar dollars, the reading bill, the nurse grant we received. So they will be adjusted and they will come for board approval in February. The other categories are pretty consistent to the previous years. Special ed, again, there is an increase in transportation services. We have some specialized transportation to some students that are needing separate transportation for themselves. It's written in their IEPs. We, we make sure that that information is in their IEPs before we approve transportation. So the, the special ed area is spending pretty much the same as it did last year, around the three million dollar range, the thirty-two to thirty-four percent spent compared to the previous year. In the revenue side or at the bottom of your spreadsheet, you will see that the local sources is a little higher than it is last year. But in January, you will see the January property tax payment. We did receive our property tax payments and I will report in January that we did pay off the short-term borrow or the line of credit in record time. So that will be reported out next month. But we did receive in December, we do receive our state aid. Our state aid is, has increased from last year. So we received approximately a million dollars more at this time than we did in the previous year. So you'll see that under state sources. Are there any questions on the December variance report?
I do not have any questions. Anyone else? I think we're good, thank you. Okay, and then everyone's favorite topic. Item seven B, twenty-twenty-four property tax review. I asked Brittany to go over this because of questions coming in from taxpayers. So this is a perfect time to go over it. I hope many are watching right now or if not, they can come back to it. So Brittany, this one's for you.
Sure. So again, I was asked by the committee to come and present a little more detail on property taxes. This is still going to be big picture. And if there are any questions from the community, they can feel free to reach out to me if my explanation tonight does not answer their questions. But as you are aware, in October of every year, we do set the property tax levy, which is then distributed to our municipalities that we have for our school district. And then that is paid throughout the year. We are seeing that residents are paying their property taxes later, which then reduces our revenue. Not in total, but if people pay more in December, our payment from the village is more in January, if that makes sense. The more payment they receive, then the more payment they give us. As long as the total in the end, they give us matches, that's all that matters. But if people are delaying their payments, like not paying them right away, our revenue comes in slower, if that makes sense. Some of the areas that I spoke about, I received questions. So I was just going to go over the questions that were given me, if that's okay. If there's more clarification that you need, please let me know. But regard.
Sounds good.
Oh, okay. Regarding the, I believe I have one through six on my summary report to the committee. And I was asked questions for each one of those, so I'll just go over the, each of the questions. Number one was regarding the three hundred and twenty-five dollars that districts received in the biennial, biennial, excuse me, biennial budget. The question was, did the state provide any funds towards the revenue limit increase? They were under the impression that the state funded this full increase. So the state during that biennial budget can increase revenue two ways. They can increase state aid, which will increase the amount of state aid districts receive, but won't increase our overall revenue limit. So if the state aid just increased and it moved over to the revenue limit, that revenue would increase, but the property taxes would decrease because your pot is still the same. In this biennial budget, which is great for districts, they put it on the revenue limit. So the revenue limit that this district was allowed to have, the pie got bigger. So the amount of money we were able to receive got bigger, which then means it didn't all come from the state. Because if it came from the state, then the property taxes would have decreased. So it is a portion from both sides to be able to make the whole pot of our revenue limit larger. Does that make sense? Okay. The next question, number two, is regards to the eleven thousand dollars per student that the state biennial budget increased the low revenue ceiling on the revenue limit for districts. So any district that was not at the eleven thousand dollar minimum, some districts are higher than eleven thousand dollars. If you are not at the eleven thousand dollar on the revenue limit, you were able to bump up to eleven thousand dollars per student. We were not at eleven thousand dollars last year. We were at ten thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So yes, we did get to bump up to the low revenue limit of eleven thousand dollars. It was referenced that we are approximately the fifteen thousand dollar number. And I believe that, that we're getting confused with the revenue limit is state aid and property tax revenue, solely those two. We bring in other revenue by rentals, grants, federal grants, Essar money. There's other revenue that we bring in, but there's only certain revenue that's under the revenue limit. So the revenue limit only allows up to the eleven thousand dollars, even though our total revenue or our total expenditures is around the fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar range.
So it's, it's fifteen or sixteen thousand in that range to?
For all expenses, in all revenue.
For all expenses to educate a student.
Correct.
Okay.
And that is not for twenty-two, twenty-three because we don't have that information. As you know, the audit was just finished, so it will get reported to the state and then the state will come up with our per pupil. It doesn't change drastically each year. So the number that I'm giving you of the fifteen to sixteen thousand dollar range is from twenty-two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two. Soon we will get the twenty-two, twenty-three number and I can present that to the board.
Okay, yes, very good. It's, I think the terms sometimes confuse me, which means they will confuse probably everybody in the room here and especially the taxpayers. So I, I guess I'm a little surprised that we were under the eleven thousand dollar revenue limit when I knew about what it costs to educate one student in the district. You, you can see how that would happen.
Right.
But, okay, you just clarified it for us.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on those two?
What's that?
I just wanted to make sure no one else on the board had questions on the two that I just went through.
Right, by all means. Russ? If we didn't take the three twenty-five plus the additional to get us to the eleven, would we be restricted in future years from accessing those funds?
And that's a question further down, but yes. So you can, I can answer it.
I just want to, I think people miss that.
Okay, so you can.
We can miss the boat on those funds if we choose not to.
Correct. So the three twenty-five is given to all districts, but you don't levy to the max then. So your calculation will say eleven thousand dollars. And then when you get to the bottom of the calculation, it will say, you have funds left over. Are you sure you don't want them? So you are still getting the eleven thousand dollars, you're just not taking it all. And the answer to your question is absolutely because the revenue limit the next year is based and starts on what you maxed or what you levied the previous year. So if you don't levy to the max that year, the beginning of your calculation next year will be lower and you will never be able to get that back. So the question further down, I won't answer because I just answered it now. Does that make sense? Because you had that question further down in your.
It's the next question.
Oh, it is the next question, sorry.
Thank you, sorry, I just wanted to point me, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to number four. And number four is regarding our membership. Please elaborate on this. Student enrollment increasing versus student enrollment decreasing is one, takes it, is one more of an advantage the other. It depends on the district. We take, as you know, we have a membership count in September of every year and we have a membership account in January of every year. The membership account in September rolls over into our revenue limit. So you cannot have the annual meeting prior to the membership count because that tells you how many students you have and that tells you how much revenue you're able to receive that year. The membership count we have in January tells the state how much state aid we will receive the following year. So they take three-year average of our September count and that's how much we get for our revenue limit calculation. And they take three years because some district could have, let's say, a COVID year where you reduce the number of students, you're not hurting really bad that year. That's why they take the three-year average. Some things, if you decline in enrollment, you will get a declining enrollment exemption. If you decline in enrollment year over year over year, you'll continue to get that exemption. Means they'll still give you the revenue for those years. If you increase a year over a declining enrollment year, you will then lose that exemption. And the money, depending on how many students you increased by, you might be losing more of your declining enrollment exemption money than you are gaining in the two to five students, depending on what district you are, by gaining on your three-year average. So that is negative, not to our advantage. But obviously, more students equal more revenue. So that is an advantage. If for some reason we would increase the number of students and we have to add a class or a section, then the eleven thousand dollars we're receiving for that student is not going to cover the costs of adding a section. So that would be a disadvantage. So the answer is both.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I ask this question because I know it's complicated and sometimes it's, it's a little counterintuitive that an increasing enrollment can hurt you depending. And that's what you just said. I don't know if everyone heard that, but that's what you just said. So it depends on the numbers.
In, in some circumstances, yes.
I think if you, see if I get this right. If you increased enrollment a lot, let's say by a hundred students, it wouldn't hurt us by this calculation because you would exceed the case of having an exception for reduced enrollment last year, let's say.
Right.
Okay.
So for example, when we brought on four, four-year-old kindergarten, because we had an increase in enrollment, which we got a startup grant for, so that's, that's not taken into the account that I'm going to talk to about right now. But we lost the declining enrollment exemption that year. Great, that in the future, we are having more students, yes. But that year, we lost three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in, in our declining enrollment exemption. But in that, you look to the future, it's more beneficial that we have 4K and that that revenue will then bring on three years because we only got a third of that year. Well, a half of a third because they're only, you're half, half of a day.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Questions, anyone on that one? No? Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to number five. Number five was regarding the increase in property valuation for each one of our municipalities. If you average those, the municipalities increase their property values by nine point four percent. Means that the properties in our district, residential and commercial, are worth more money. And the answer to the question on if they are worth more money, would your property taxes increase or decrease? If we stayed status quo and nothing changed in our district, our expenditures didn't change, our revenue didn't change and people's property values went up and the mill rate stayed the same, they would not be paying more money.
Okay, I think that's a standard tough issue to understand. I thought I understood it and you just confirmed it. So good, very good on that one. Thank you.
And I believe you had one last question regarding a question from a, a community member. With all new houses that have been built and new businesses that have come into Germantown, why do our taxes keep going up? Inflation. It was eight point one percent last year of CPI. Everything, costs are going up, property values are going up. Yes, the, if, if you're bringing in, I'm going to just give an example of a big company. They're paying a portion of their property, of their property taxes, they're paying that. But they're also bringing value to our community, which. But they're also bringing value to our community, which then would increase our property values. So they're taking a portion of their, of the whole picture of property taxes. But the value of your house has now increased and you are going to pay the 1,000, you know, because the mill rate's $8.21 per thousand-dollar value of your house. So if your value is going up, our mill rate, the amount we're asking for, is less than we asked for last year. But the values are higher. So $100,000 is now $125,000. We're asking for $8.21 on that $120,000. And last year we asked for $8.28, so seven cents less. But you're paying 20, you're worth $20,000 more of that. Hope that answered their questions. If not, have them call me.
It does answer the question. I, I mean, I think the way I would answer it is the not enough homes have been built to account for inflation. Maybe that's one way of saying it. You know, for the person that asked that question. And you answered that, so very good. Thank you.
Were there other questions?
Looks like the answer is no.
Okay.
All right, and I think we did not, or did we have unfinished business?
No.
Oh, that's it. I think one last motion.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries and we are adjourned at 5:21.
Good to start. Call the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting to order, January 22nd. It is 5:29 PM. Roll call. Sigamatham.
Here.
Mr. Pollak.
Here.
Mr. Uwirt, here. Item two, agenda revisions and approval.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Sigamatham with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item four, approval of minutes, December 18th, 2023 committee minutes.
Motion to approve the April, or December 18th, 2023 committee minutes.
Second.
Sigamatham with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Item five, reports and updates, M5A, Academic Career Planning. Mr. Mizziak.
All right, hopefully that stops. All right. Tonight I brought another special guest speaker for you. So this is Ms. Alex Fisher from GHS. She's been leading a team of primarily high school teachers, but there is some middle school representation on her ACP committee. And tonight we have brought to you a report surrounding academic and career planning. And Alex is going to fill you in on some of the work that she has done with her team. PI 26 of Wisconsin State statutes mandates that all students engage in academic and career planning in grades six through 12 as outlined in the district's Education for Employment Plan. PI 26 requires the Ed4 employment plan to be reviewed and if necessary, updated on an annual basis. So this is similar to what Brittany had brought to you, something that we will bring to you on an annual basis for you to review and then update if needed. Tonight Alex is bringing to you two key pieces of Ed4 employment plan, which includes the Portrait of the Graduate and the Readiness Scorecard, as well as she'll provide you with some background on the Ed4 employment plan. So I will hand it over to Alex.
All right, good evening. As Jake stated, I'm Alex Fisher. I serve in two roles at the high school, in both the Dean of Students as well as the Academic and Career Planning Coordinator. Today I'm going to talk to you about some of the work we've been doing for informational purposes and to get your feedback to eventually solicit your approval on some of these components. So I'll first touch on the Education for Employment Plan, which is really the compliance piece of ACP. Then the Portrait of a Graduate, which is about establishing a vision and a mission for what we want all of our GHS graduates to obtain upon graduation. And then a scorecard for measuring the success of our Portrait of a Graduate. You can skip this line. So as Jake stated, academic and career planning is a requirement as part of state statute for grades six through 12, but it is recommended 4K through 12. As we know that academic and career planning, while we don't necessarily think about our 4K five-year-old students planning for college, they are starting to have those basic conversations around what is a job, what are needs versus wants and the things that go along with academic and career planning. The E4E Plan is the document that allows us to become in compliance with the state. If you click into, in this guide, that, or the other one, Chris, up top. This is the general outline of what these required components are for our ACP or E4E Plan. So when creating our E4E Plan, I followed this fairly closely and used the template that the state required. So now if you go back to the other one that you opened, I have started to build this kind of from scratch. As you scroll through each section, it basically outlines all of the activities, resources, and opportunities we offer Germantown students as part of our academic and career plan, as well as our goals and aspirations moving forward as a program. So first there you'll see our six, 12, ACP, scope and sequence. As I stated, it is required by the state that we offer a curriculum around academic and career planning. By the state, we specifically use the Zello platform, which is the state recommended program to deliver those lessons. So the scope and sequence is essentially built around that Zello program. And those lessons include things of, such as how to interview for a job, building a resume, understanding the difference between needs and wants, some financial planning things. So 21st century skills you would want students to engage in in order to be prepared for life after high school. We also outline several of the credentials and opportunities we offer for students to get experiences in high school early on. So some of our industry-based credentials, youth apprenticeship and co-op, the organizations that we expose students to. And most notably, our career pathways, which this was essentially the work of Mr. Smith and Mr. Rooney over the past year, year and a half before I arrived. We have 17 career pathways that outline the courses as well as the organizations and programming we offer for students. For example, for advanced manufacturing, we have a document that is used as a communication tool to show families, these are the classes at GHS we could use to prepare students for that pathway, as well as recommended careers, the level of necessary education, and then the financial outcome for those. And we have six that are regionally approved by the state of Wisconsin, which is the max that are currently available. So overall, this document just outlines our plan for, that we currently, or, excuse me, of items that we currently implement around academic and career planning. Anything that has a red asterisk is something that we have newly implemented this year or in the process of implementing for next year. You'll notice that at the top, there was two sections that were highlighted in yellow and that is because we cannot complete them because we do not have those components yet created at GHS. So that has been the heart of the work I've been working on for ACP. And that's the Portrait of the Graduate as well as the scorecard. So at this time, before I move on to the actual Portrait of a Graduate and the scorecard, I'm going to pause to see if there are any questions around the E4E Plan itself.
So this is more a guide for our parents and probably guidance to work with the student on the pathways portion of this? Is that what we're...
The E4E Plan, I would say, is not, parents could view it, but I would view it as more of an internal document outlining everything we do to, as part of our ACP programming. The pathways are specifically listed on our Academic and Career Planning website and we refer families to those around course planning time. But that's just one component. This document is necessary for state compliance.
Yeah. And I think last year we talked more about the pathways about this time of year. And this is kind of the continuing building of that robust end of this program and complying with the state, but really outline our district's kind of mission behind all this.
Correct. Because this document would not have been able to be built without the career pathways being in place. So same as the Portrait of the Graduate and the scorecard, we can't complete and approve this E4E Plan without those pieces being established first.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on?
Just a comment. I mean, it's a lot of information there and well put together and easy to kind of go through. So it's user-friendly for, you know, parents and students to both go through. So just wanted to commend you on a good job at putting this together and look forward to, you know, finishing those other two components.
Thank you. And we'll continue to add to this as well and continue to grow this program as I feel it is probably the most applicable to our students as every student. is planning for something after high school. So then within this, we have our Portrait of a Graduate. A Portrait of a Graduate is essentially a vision and a mission for what a successful Germantown graduate will look like. They, it consists of the attributes, the dispositions, and the, yeah, the attributes and the dispositions and the values we want to instill in all graduates by the time that they leave here, and that's the core of why we're doing this work, because we want to determine are our students really college, career, and life-ready? And the mode that we have taken to develop this Portrait of a Graduate, as well as the scorecard, is using national and state recommendations as the basis for our development, as well as, of course, incorporating our own community values within them. So if you click on the national link, the national recommendation, if you just scroll down to that little picture there, is they put, they have these little buckets that they recommend, so academic readiness, workplace, college-ready, future-focused, life-ready, civic-minded, and financially savvy. And within those, those are dispositions we would hope all graduates would have to be successful within the twenty-first century. And so we kept these recommendations in mind and those key buckets when building each of these statements. If you go back to the presentation and click the state recommendations, the state defines this as the redefining ready network, so I would encourage you to look through the site for further information, but specifically if you click the readiness scorecards up at the top. There are recommendations for the scorecard on the metrics we would use, and they're closely aligned with our state report card. So the purpose of this scorecard will essentially be to support our growth in our ACP program and find areas that we can improve our system to better service all of our students. These scorecards are developed at every level. We're taking a top-down approach because graduates are graduating from the high school, but the middle school and the elementary schools, again, are working to develop that graduate, so we're starting with a Portrait of the Graduate at the high school, but the long-term goal will be to roll it out at the various levels, all working towards the end goal of a GHS graduate. So, within our committee, did you skip one?
Did you want the examples or?
Yeah. If you would like, you can look through the different examples, but other districts are doing this work as well. They all take various approaches, which, again, you can look at individually. Some are really focused on the data piece, others are focused on the attributes and the dispositions. We kind of took a hybrid approach, because I'm a math person, I think data speaks, but I also think that the things we value as a school need to be represented as well. So as an ACP committee, we developed a vision statement and mission statements based off of the information I presented. Think of the vision statement as a branding line for GHS, so when you think about Nike, you think about their slogan, "Just Do It," and that holds value to their brand. So for the GHS brand, Warhawks are soaring towards college, career, and life readiness because that is the end goal for all students. Where soaring is an acronym that we use, the buckets, which are in parentheses, that were based off of the national recommendation. So strives to grow academically with the key word being grow, as all students are going to have varying levels of academic success, but we're, but we're, what we're focused on as educators is that they are showing growth from the time they start with us in ninth grade to the time that they leave our building. Orchestrates future goals and plans, so that's really the heart of ACP, that all students have a plan for after high school, whatever that may look like, and that we're facilitating that process at the high school. Actualizes their potential as an individual, so bringing it to reality who they are as people in their own regards, responsibly carries out their civic duties. So I think this is where the parent involvement comes in, because this is really a team effort. There's a lot of stakeholders involved in developing a graduate, so I think that the most basic example of, you know, students registering to vote when they're eighteen, we obviously can't make students do that as educators, but the parent involvement piece in developing that. Immerse us in self-reflection, because without reflecting on our individual aspirations as well as who we are as people, we cannot grow. Navigates finances responsibly, which is something we're kind of ahead of the game on compared to other districts in the state when we, because we require all students to take that financial literacy class, which is now going to be a state mandate for all high schools, so we're ahead of the curve on that. And then grows in twenty-first century skills, twenty-first century skills being things such as digital literacy and citizenship, so things that people need to be successful in our ever-changing society. From those statements, we have brought this to stakeholders for feedback from, so far I've been to every elementary building leadership team, as well as a high school PTA meeting. I've brought it to the entire high school staff, as well as an elementary PTA, and I'll be going to the middle school in February to receive feedback on that, on those statements as well. And then lastly, the scorecards. We can say we're doing all of those nice things, and we can aspire to do so, but unless we are tracking are our students actually college, career, and/or life-ready, we don't really know. So what we've developed is our own scorecard based off of the state recommendations with metrics to define what would be considered a college-ready, a career-ready, and/or a life-ready graduate. None of the numbers in here are accurate, because we're just selecting buckets at this time or items to measure, but these are the, the items we will use as indicators for each category, as well as the, within each indicator category, how many of those will we expect a student to achieve in order to be considered career, college, or life-ready? For example, in the college column, I wouldn't expect a student to hit all five of those for me to say that they are college-ready, but what our committee is discussing is how many of those indicators. We met this afternoon, and we talked about three of those five possibly. And then the final remark I'll make on this scorecard is I would anticipate or would like all students to be college, career, and life-ready regardless of their pathway. And I know the common sentiment is, well, not all students are going to college. That is correct, so I like to think of the college indicator section as more of an academically rigorous challenge or finding academic success in some area, which we would hope that all students do. And then the purpose of this document is not to be a student-facing document for them to put themselves into buckets, well, I didn't meet the, these criteria, so I must not be ready for this. It's more so meant for internal use, for us to evaluate as educators. If we are saying we value workplace learning experiences, but only ten percent of our students are involved in that component, what can we do as a school to get more students involved in it? So it's primarily for internal use to improve our practices. And that wraps up my information piece on the Portrait of the Graduate and the scorecard. So now if there are any questions or comments on that component?
There's a lot in here, and I especially like the financial piece you have in there. I think a lot of students don't necessarily understand the difference between needs and wants, or what it takes to have money. A great engineer once told me, to have money, you either need to make more or spend less. You know, it's, it's that simple. But I'm also wondering, because we're trying to have our students ready for the world when they leave here, is there anywhere a unit on ethics? You know, it's difficult to teach virtue, but I think students need to know that, you know, when they get out in the real world, they may be faced with some ethical decisions at their place of employment. And what I mean by that is, for myself, let's say I have a piece of equipment that the company I work for sells that doesn't make rating. You know, I can be a more likable guy if I don't complain about that piece of equipment not making rating, but if I have ethics and virtue, we shouldn't be selling a piece of equipment that doesn't make rating. So I often joke that my most important engineering class I had was my ethics class, because, you know, once you get out in the real world, you're faced with all sorts of things that involves ethics, and I think students maybe need to be ready for it when it happens, so...
Yeah, absolutely. While the Zello lessons do not have an ethics lesson embedded in them, I would almost guarantee in some capacity that in courses such as, you know, our Project Lead the Way classes and our Tech Ed classes, and likely even some of our social studies classes, teachers often do bring up those when they're having discourse with students. I couldn't cite a specific example, but I think it happens probably a little more authentically than a standalone lesson, if that makes sense.
Okay, sure, yeah, very good.
I appreciate the clarification on it not being a student-facing document. Obviously, when I saw that, there's a lot that can go into that, and a student could or couldn't take out of it. Maybe not that they're not aware of it existing, but I do feel it is a good check and balance for our district to ensure we are meeting our goals or, or working towards at least those goals. And it really provides us data to, to work from and help guide, hey, we say X, but we're not achieving it, or we, we're achieving high and wide, right? And it gives us a path to re-correct if need be, or, or to continue pushing further in where we're going. So as this program continues to, to be built out, I, I think it's only going to serve this district justice in, in a way point and a guidance as we move forward for each one of these children, so I really appreciate your hard work in it.
Thank you.
We, we can't be afraid of the data, is really what it comes down to. If, if there's a piece of this that is falling short, we need to know, and we need to know like where or how we can start to improve it. So this, I mean, I totally understand too that this being, the scorecard being internal, in an ideal world too though, I would like to think that we'd be able to tweak it in some way to, to be able to share this with the community as well, not necessarily everything, but, but aspects of this so that the community knows, you know, here we are now, here's where we want to be, and then two, three, four years from now, the progress that, that we've made.
Yeah, I think on that point, Mr. Pollak, the maturity of the work that Alex and her team are doing will lend itself to two presentations we have tonight at the board level in future years. We have an annual assessment report that we started last year, and the scorecard will be a component of that, of how we're measuring beyond our standardized assessment. And then we have teachers from AME Bell presenting on school learning and student learning objectives. This scorecard lends itself to be the, this is what we're aiming for, to exceed at the high school level, tiered down to the middle school, beyond just standardized tests, all the all-around college, career, and life readiness. So these, the work that they're building foundationally will lead to future continuous improvement in the district and hopefully strategic planning around those areas.
Very good, anything else? Thank you. If there's nothing else, we can move on to five B. That'll be Reading Pilot Update number five. That is an increasing number. Hopefully we got good news.
Two more than planned, so.
Yes.
Keep going. As promised, monthly, I am bringing to you an update on the pilots that we have conducted at the elementary and the middle school. I'll start with the middle school. The middle school again is piloting two separate resources that are connected to what we're using at the elementary level, so at Kennedy, they're using StudySync and Into Literature. There's a small little gap that's happening at the middle school right now as they're engaged in a writing unit, so they will be picking up for the most part in the second piece of their pilot. So their pilot is slightly different than we, what, what, what we ran at the elementary level. They're in a stacked-type fashion because the middle school lends itself to using units, whereas at the elementary level, just the nature of the program and the nature of the readers didn't lend itself to that. So the middle school will be, and has started, using the second resource that there is, so they'll have a comparison on a teacher level between those two. So in December and January, the reading review team met to evaluate the pilots and to determine if there was any additional information that they needed in the decision-making process. So right now, what I've presented to you so far, we've talked, I mean, we will talk tonight about parent data, student data, and then the teacher rubric data, and they thought at this point, we've, we've collected a lot of the information that we would need to make an informed decision regarding the three resources that we've piloted at the elementary level. The last thing that we're waiting for is some information from the state. Act twenty has formed the reading council, as I've spoken about before. There was some talk that there would be some information released in January, and now I'm hearing rumblings that that official date might be pushed out even further. So I'll, I'll talk about that in a little bit here. The reading review team took a look at the rubric, so I solicited some initial feedback around the rubric before teachers used it. I followed up with them, we met after school, and one of the things that they did was they evaluated each one of the components that was on there to make sure that they were necessary and fully evaluated what we were looking for. The teachers agreed that what we did was a comprehensive look at it, so they didn't think the rubric was really missing anything in terms of what we were looking for in terms of a reading resource. So the information that's there should be a valid assessment of each one of the, the resources. We've secured materials for all three of the pilots to extend this out as long as we need to, given the flexible timing of Act twenty and when we might know that information, when we would be ready to move forward. All three of the, the pilot companies have, have worked with me so that we can essentially extend this as long as we need to. That buys us a little bit of time so that we can see where the state is going in terms of their recommendations regarding Act twenty. One important note that I can tell you is all three of the resources that we're, we're using meet the criteria for Act twenty. So going forward, none of them would be not approved by the state of Wisconsin in terms of, does this resource meet the heart of what Act twenty was supposed to do? What they have not met the criteria for yet is whether or not they would be reimbursed by the state of Wisconsin. So all three of these resources would be resources we would be able to use in, in future years, it's just whether or not the state would reimburse them. There's a couple of criteria that you have to meet to, to be usable. One of them is that they can't use the three-Qing method as a primary source of instruction, so none of these resources contain that reading component. If you look on ed reports, I think I've referenced this before too, all the resources meet the, the criteria for the science of reading, which is really the philosophy behind Act twenty. All the pilot teachers completed the resource rubric to evaluate the effectiveness of each one of the reading resources that they use, so individual teachers filled out the, the rubric and then provided their feedback to me, and then I kind of compiled that for you in this report. And then principals, teachers, and myself have continued to conduct instructional rounds and be in classrooms to see each one of these resources in action. So the next, in terms of the attachments that I've provided for you, I provided the teacher evaluations there, and then I compiled them as a summary score for you. So you can see for each one of the criteria areas, I broke it apart from the K-two level and the three-five level, as we've always kind of looked at those two things as separate pieces, although two of our resources span K-five. So the, the points that I will make, I won't go through each one of these components for you, but I, I want to provide some clarity around this. If you, if you were to take this and compile it into just one table and look at K-two across the board, and then look at three-five across the board, you'll see some trends and patterns in terms of which resources our teachers kind of rated higher than others. And although, for example... And although, um, for example, Super Kids at K-two, uh, pretty much outranks HMH and Wonders in every single, you know, component or almost every component. I, I wouldn't look at that as Super Kids is the clear winner of the K-two and that's the decision we should make. I tried to, when we built this rubric, provide success criteria that were aligned to the big component. And what I asked teachers to do was take a look at that success criteria that's listed below or that criteria that's listed below that's related to that category and then assess it. We didn't necessarily go through a calibration activity where every one of the teachers would rank the resource exactly the same way. What they did was they evaluated it through their lens while they used it in their classroom with their students. So, one of the big takeaways that I would, that I would take when we look at these is all three of the resources that we piloted in the classrooms were highly successful in terms of our teachers', um, ratings related to each one of these categories. So all of them are meeting expectations for our teachers. And all of our teachers, I think, would say, these are resources that we could move forward with. So there isn't one on here that we would have eliminated. I think this would be one component that I would then use with the whole scope of all the data that we collected to then evaluate each one of those resources. So, we would then take a look at the parent feedback on the resource and then we look at the student data that correlates to it to see when we look at this as a complete picture, how would we evaluate the resources? And then I'll pause there if there are questions about the explanation I provided for the evaluations. One, one of the reasons why I wouldn't say, take it as, you know, this is a clear, just because one outranks, they're very small samples. So, when you're talking about five or six teachers who are rating one resource at the K-two level, i- if one teacher is thrilled with the resource and rates it four across the board, you're gonna push that three-point something up a little bit more than others. The feedback, when you talk to teachers about all three of these resources, most of them are, are, are very positive when they talk about just about every element of it. And then in the areas where it's scored lower, one of the things that I look to is, this is information that we know on the implementation side. So when we go forward, um, there are a couple of elements for each one of the programs where I could say, this is something that we learned during the pilot process that we can then preemptively work towards to address going forward. So an example of that is HMH. If you look at their organization, it's scored low with our teachers. And one of the reasons why it's scored low with our teachers is the overwhelming number of resources that are in HMH. So one of the things is, they didn't have a team of teachers to sit down and look through each one of the units, overview the unit and determine which pieces were most important. They were working sometimes in isolation to determine those pieces. If HMH is what we move forward with, with UBD, we can proactively create that organization for teachers so that HMH is more usable for all of our teachers if we were to move forward with it.
So that, I mean, that, that makes great sense. You highlighted one that I was gonna point out just 'cause it seemed to be a little lower. Um, and I'd say Wonders is in that as well, at the two-point-eight. I had one. I have to scroll, two seconds here. So one of interesting concern I found was under the supports for teachers. Obviously, Wonders would stand out a bit of a sort of them there at a two-point-one. Uh, HMH at a two-point-nine, Super Kids, this is K through two.
Yep.
Wonders in three through five got a two-point-six and HMH actually bumps up to a three-point-three in that realm. Are we seeing that same logic play out there?
Yep, so, this is where I'd point to the, um, you know, the decimal piece. Where it's, when you see one that's a little bit lower than others, don't make huge assumptions because the training that was provided, K-two, was the same as the training that was provided three-five. So that whole group got exactly the same training and you could see our three-five teachers rated Wonders a little bit higher.
We would see that moving forward more specified.
What's that?
We'd see that distinction probably more specified as far as training provided to our staff.
Right, so, um, and if you were to talk to our Wonders teachers, um, part of the rating that they provided it or what they were highlighting there was the initial training that Wonders provided. So for each one of the companies, uh, you know, the initial conversation we had is, what, what are the things that teachers absolutely need to know day one to jump in and to, to start working with this resource? Uh, each one of those companies approached it slightly different. And, uh, one of the things that happened was teachers talked to each other about the initial support that was provided. Super Kids provided in-person, grade-level-specific support for the units. And our teachers all thought that was great. And then HMH teachers heard about that and they said, why didn't we get that kind of treatment? And part of it's because this, we just talked to the companies and said, what, what do you need to offer? Uh, so there's that little bit of a relative comparison effect that's going on. But, there is something that we definitely learned through that process as to what our teachers prefer. Wonders, the, um, rep that I have from there said, you know, we prioritize our districts that purchase the curriculum. And those dates in August when we had teachers were filled up by all of the different districts that had purchased Wonders and we're implementing Wonders this year. So getting in-person support wasn't something that they could offer us. They then followed up with in-person support. And that in-person support was grade-level specific and targeted to our teachers. And they absolutely loved it. And I, I, there's, the Wonders is a tale of two, um, halves for this semester. I'd say the, the first two months, um, in terms of our teachers' experience with Wonders and how they felt about it was very different than what we experienced the second half. And there's, there's been a one-eighty for many of our teachers around Wonders. And part of it was that in-person grade-level support because their, their understanding of how to use it significantly changed. So again, implementation-wise, we know something that we have to do to make sure that this is successful launching it because of the way that our teachers responded to it. But I, the, I think what teachers are, and what they described to me around that was primarily related to the, the first piece. If you would've just asked them to rate the in-person support, it would've been exceptionally high because they, they very much appreciated their time with the, the trainer that they sent to us.
And then phonological and phonetic awareness, uh, a large part of why we're here. Obviously, I see Wonders standing out at a two-point-four with HMH at a three-point-two, Super Kids at a three-point-six. However, I do see Wonders in three, and that, that's K through two.
Yep.
Do see Wonders takes a significant bump forward in three through five. Well, HMH looks like it takes, and I shouldn't be significant, but, uh, HMH actually takes a step back to a two-point-eight in that.
Yep. Um, same thing, so, um, one of the things that popped out of here was the scope and sequence that was offered, uh, within each one of those programs. It's different than what they have previously experienced. So we do currently have resources, um, that work towards building that awareness. And more of the information that I received around this category was how it compares to what we were already doing in classrooms. I don't think, when we kinda talked about this broadly as a reading review team, when they saw these scores, when they were compiled as one, there wasn't necessarily a concern for that element of Wonders or HMH. The Super Kids group would tell you, um, and, and by and large, the response from the five teachers who piloted Super Kids, they absolutely loved their program. And you can kinda see it in the ratings that they provided, whereas Super Kids is across the board higher. But e- even when we picked it apart and we took a look at each of these ratings, there wasn't anything that they identified as concern. The reading review team, when they looked at these ratings, uh, more or less what they were, were talking about was, how did this inform us about each one of the programs? And again, if you talk to the teachers who piloted them and that may even give them a, a score of a two in that area, part of it was, they were comparing it to what they had previously seen in that, you know, the, their years of experience here. They'd say, well, it may have not moved as fast or the progression had changed. Or one other concern that they had was, um, especially if you're a second-grade teacher, Wonders has an expectation that in kindergarten or in first grade, there were some skills that were developed. So now when they were trying it in second grade, that progression seemed off. And it's because, well, there are pieces that could potentially be missing. And that's kinda the nature of the pilot where we don't have a full, um, implementation where all the kids have had all the, the different background experiences that sometimes you would expect in second grade. Again, this is something that's important for us to take forward because we're gonna have kids who start one of these programs in fifth grade potentially, where there are some pieces that we should be aware of scope and sequence-wise that may have come before. And it's, it's the, how do we plan for that role so that each one of our students can be successful?
Well, and just to that point then, 'cause we've talked about, you know, obviously, Super Kids, if you do look at this information, it looks like Super Kids is off the chart, both for parents and also for teachers. But like you just said, with, um, the certain, if you, if we have Super Kids from K through two and then they go to a different program, then they potentially might not be ready. You know, or be missing some component. So, how are we going to, you know, figure out, is Super Kids, because it, it is so popular, obviously, with the teachers and the parents, to, one, we have to justify the, the cost of buying another curriculum? And then how are we gonna know how that's going to affect the second to the third grade, um, transition?
Yep, and that's, that's probably the biggest question that stands out with Super Kids is, you do create a little bit of difference in your programming when you have two separate resources that you're using. Uh, what we've kind of said from the start with the pilots is, K-two readers need something different and three-five need something different too. So, what we're looking for is, when we look at the data as a whole, is, does Super Kids outperform Wonders and HMH to the point that we can justify that little bit of transition? Because it, it will be more work, especially on my end, if we have two separate programs working, K-two and three-five. But if it's what's best for our kids and are best for our readers, then that's the decision that we make. And I think, uh, our MAP data, I, I would've included it tonight, but we were about two days behind. Um, we do have the majority of the student data in that I can provide to you very shortly. Uh, you can kinda see how our students perform with each one of those. And then, once you see that complete picture, uh, student data, parent data, and our teacher evaluation of the programs, that, that holistic view of every piece of it, I think that's where we can make the most informed decision. Uh, I, I've said this to Dr. Reuter a few times. I think the benefit that we have is we have three resources that I can be confident are gonna help develop our readers going forward. And I, I think the problem that we have is picking the best one out of three really good options.
Is a way, is there a way to determine if Super Kids already has those com- so those components will be met already? 'Cause they might already be in there as far as, so that transition won't be, you know, they might be ahead.
Yeah, uh, so what Super Kids will tell you is if you can get kids to read by the end of second grade, then it doesn't matter what program you move to after that because they're gonna be strong readers going into third grade. So that's, absolutely, that's the, the philosophy that they kinda have. My initial meetings with them, they, they stated that, that the reason why they're a K-two company and not a K-five company is they put all their eggs in the basket of developing high-quality readers at the early ages so that they can focus on the skills that are necessary to develop, um, our youngest of readers. That's why they're specializing in just K-two. But, but planning-wise, absolutely, if we, if we take a look at, if, once we determine what the resources are that we're going to use or the resource we're going to use, we do programmatically, from a, an understanding by design standpoint, need to take a look at what standards are they mastering in second grade? And then how does that transition look to third grade? And are there expectations of that previous, um, uh, learning? That, that there's a gap in that our students might need?
This portion of the process really lends itself to shining a lot of light on, on all, all of the curriculum involved here, but more specifically concurrently with what process we choose to implement. And I don't think that was necessarily intent, uh, from this seat going into it. We just wanted to see what a rating looked like. But I, it's exciting to see that you guys were able to reverse-engineer the process into saying, this is a number this way, this is how we could improve it. And I, I say that, I, if I took the numbers you provided and did some math. So, uh, if we were looking for exceeded expectations across all categorical information that teachers were asked to provide input on, and they, let's say they all scored a four B sixty-four. Meats would be at forty-eight. And, and we see, um, going through that, Super Kids lands at a fifty-five point one. Uh, HMH a fifty point two, Wonders is a forty-six point six, that's K through two. And then we have a fifty-two for HMH and a fifty-six point one, um, for three through five. Uh, and, and a lot of the conversation we've just had explains, well, some of those numbers could look a little apart. Or it's interesting that Wonders finished so far ahead in one and, and last in the other. But it sounds like we've taken that data and, and figured out how, if that would be the one we would choose, where we could bump those numbers up in usability for, for, for the teachers and the students and effectiveness. So, appreciate that side or that approach to the process. Anything else? And I think we have, is the parent feedback is next?
Uh, so same thing, uh, for the parent data, I also compiled that for all of HMH and all of Wonders. Uh, I did my best to, uh, clean up the data as much as I possibly could because there were some parents who may have indicated that their student was in a resource that didn't exist. So for example, if there was a grade level, uh, we did have a parent who selected Super Kids for, you know, grades three or four. So at that point in time, I tried to reverse back to try and figure out if this is a parent of Amy Bell and they're in fourth grade, what resource could they be using? So I did my best to clean up the data so that we're painting as accurate a picture as possible that's going forward. And again, this is one of those, um, surveys that if you take a look at the, the, the survey questions that I provided at the end, it'll give you a context for what each one of those responses were. So for example, for the first one, we're looking at how satisfied were you with the program? With a four being very satisfied and a three being satisfied. And by and large, our parents were satisfied with the programs that, um, their students were using in their classrooms. Um, one of the things that I would say that I learned through this was there's a difference in, uh, again, the way in which the resource was used with our families. So, Super Kids has some natural outreach points 'cause there are backpack pages that go home every night. And that visibility, I think, impacted the way in which our parents interacted with Super Kids K-two. Whereas Wonders and HMH don't have as many touchpoints that are sent home with parents. And that's, again, something that we can plan for going forward. So with our teachers, how do we build up that communication with families? So they're aware of the skills that are being worked on in classrooms. So if there isn't an inherent communication that already exists within the units, how do we build that communication our, our end so that we can support reading at home? 'Cause that was probably the biggest takeaway that I had with this was, uh, just those simple backpack pages created an awareness amongst our, our parents of what kids were working on in Super Kids. Whereas HMH and Wonders, we had some parents who weren't necessarily aware of which one of the two pilots was being used within their classroom. So there was an open-ended question at the very end. I wouldn't say that there were clear themes that came across there. If there was any, that would be it, that create, how can we create a, a greater awareness of what students are working on, on a regular basis within the classrooms so that parents can support at home? 'Cause when they did write a comment, that's, that's the general feel that I got was, we wanna be able to support our kids at home, we read with them every night. What, what are, what additionally can we do to support their reading at home? Because to build strong readers, that, that, those additional reps that they get at home is something that's important. But again, to Mr. Yort's point, Super Kids and Ms. Higginson's point did outperform, uh, both HMH and Wonders in terms of our parent feedback as well. It was, um, I would say that would be one of the themes in the parent feedback was, one, more, um, Super Kids families filled out the survey, being the smallest proportion of the group because they were only a K-two group where- being the smallest proportion of the group, because they were only a K two group where Wonders and HMH were both K five. So there was a greater awareness around super kids, and the, the common sentiment from our parents was very positive regarding super kids.
Jake, you had a hundred and twenty-six responses. What was the pool? So what percent sample would that be of our parents approximately?
It's, it's, it's a small portion when you compare it to the number of families that were involved in it. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I, I can certainly give all members of the board just the percentage of parents who filled it out. It's a small sample when you look at the whole.
Thank you.
How are we doing the student sampling? Are they, are the teachers kind of going through, because obviously, you know, K through five kindergartners aren't necessarily gonna fill out their own?
No, so, yep, so they didn't fill out a survey. So what we did was, we did focus groups with each one of them. I, I remember providing some information there. Their, our elementary kiddos, they, they did provide feedback from each one of the programs, and we had focus groups that were developed by teachers, so they selected two or three students per class. They came down and met with either their principal or their principal and myself, and we asked them a series of questions. And I wouldn't say that there were necessarily huge themes that we learned from that. I think I touched on this before. It was, it was interesting in terms of things like, students would tell us that they didn't like the questions that followed a story because they were difficult. So then they had to go back and reread. So from a student's perspective, they would look at that and they're like, oh, I don't really like that, because the questions aren't easy. From a teacher perspective, we'd say, well, that sounds like a pretty solid question, because there's some rigor involved there. We're, we're prompting to do the student what we want them to do, to go back into their reading and closely read and reread. So it's one of those things when, there, there wasn't a clear theme. We asked them about stories that they liked, and what was nice is, you go across and, and you get multiple students telling you different stories that they liked from the same resource and things that they liked. So not every story, just like for adults, you know, and not everybody loves every book, but with the kids, the same thing, that they were finding stories within each one of those resources that they liked. A common theme with our super kids kiddos, they do like the characters that are in super kids. So if you've taken a look at that, there's the group of super kids that follow them all the way up, K one, two, and our K one, two kiddos have connected with those characters and do really enjoy them. If there are no other questions, I can...
If, if it turns out that super kids is the right resource for K two, and then either HMH or Wonders for grades three through five, having two different programs, I understand you discussed there'd be some maybe transition costs that would have to be associated with that. Overall, to buy the two different programs, would that be an increased cost? Or are we, is it essentially like per student? So if we get, you know, all of, all grades at HMH should be the same cost as splitting super kids and HMH?
Yeah, so there isn't a huge cost difference when you look at them that way, because almost all of them are per-student costs. That was shared at a very early teaching and learning committee with all three of them. At this point in time, I'll get updated quotes from all three, and they've kind of shared pricing information with me along the way, because there's some different components that go along with it. What I will do is, most of these programs offer, if you do multiple years with them, then there's a reduced cost for implementation in later years. And if we think about implementing a program, trying to do it on a three-year basis probably isn't going to be most beneficial for us, so we'd be forecasting forward and looking at four or five years' worth of this program. So those are the, the options that I'll provide to the board, so that you can see what each one of those looks like, and then what that combination looks like. But there isn't, it, at the end of the day, what we're looking for is the highest quality resource for our kids, and there, there isn't a significant, what I would call a significant price difference for that K two to the HMH or Wonders. There are some annual costs that are a little bit, in essence, less with super kids because of the, the resource that it is.
Thank you.
As we move forward with this, we're ultimately decision time. You explained all three are on the approved list, which is a great insight to have at this point, because that's, that was one of our biggest. Now it'll come down potentially to what is or isn't, not refundable, but grant availability for it. And my understanding is the act is going to provide some monies, and it'll just depend on which qualifies for how much. It's just another, won't be an end-all, be-all, obviously, but a, another data point for us to take into consideration.
Right, it's, it's balancing that cost saving, so it's for our early grades that there would be some refundable costs. And there's still some clarity that DPI needs to provide around what elements of the program might be refundable. There, I've listened to a lot of the calls that, or the Zoom meetings that the Reading Council has had, and there, there's just a lot of unanswered questions around that, and, and they bring that up. So, for example, HMH has multiple components. If the Reading Council and DPI haven't reviewed all of the components of HMH, will they then refund me if we fill out the grant application to say we want the full cost of what year one of HMH is? My guess is they're not going to fund, you know, half of what all of those things are. They're, what they've said on the calls is, they will refund the elements that they've reviewed and then approved, that they deem necessary to achieving the goals of Act Twenty. So I, I think there's still a large amount of clarity that's out there, or there's not a lot of clarity that's out there in terms of some of the questions that districts are asking around Act Twenty. And, and hopefully, in the coming weeks, we'll, we'll learn a little bit more. But the, like I said, each one of the resources meet the heart of what Act Twenty is saying, so they, they don't have any components in them that would prevent us from using them in future years. Next steps for me, I'm meeting with all of our pilot teachers at their schools, so just smaller groups. So I met with the reading review team, they all filled this out, but then there's that one last layer of feedback that I'm gonna get from each one of the pilot groups. I'll share all of the data with them, including the achievement data and growth data that I'll share with you regarding our students, so that they can provide, you know, one additional layer of recommendation, because I want to make sure their voices are clearly heard in the decision that we're making regarding this resource.
So we're probably looking at another month from a data standpoint.
The, the data, Chris can attest to this, I was literally compiling it today, because we were waiting for a couple of last MAP results to come in. The, you know, the weather didn't play nice with Germantown.
He's blaming me for the lack of data.
If Chris wouldn't have called off school, I would have all the data that I needed tonight. But I, I can share that with the board and the Teaching and Learning Committee separately, so you can see that, and then we can talk about it at a future Teaching and Learning Committee, just so that you can see the whole picture that, that we're looking at.
Potential improvement approval process, obviously, through teaching and learning, and then to finance and then to the full board would be my guess, or are we looking to go straight? Because it's gonna be a large dollar purchase. And then my second part of that question would be, on the finance side, we budgeted for this purchase already. Any grant that we're gonna receive back would just allow Brittany to bring a budget adjustment, hopefully, to us in our fa- district favor.
Correct.
So we're, we're not, we're not...
We could, we could...
The point I'm trying to make, we're not dependent on which one gives better grant, because we're, we're financially budgeted for this move regardless of the grant dollars. Those are gonna free up with anticipation money elsewhere for the district in the future. But that's more a bonus moving forward than it is a consideration, I guess.
Correct. It's been, yeah, and then to the question around process, the anticipated process that I have is bringing it to Teaching and Learning for Approval, Finance, then Full Board.
One last question, timeline for implementation? Because obviously, each month we push down the road, we're gonna be losing a PD day or planning for...
Yep, the, the accepted the thought that I'll have just about one PD day that I can use to provide teachers with the resources that are along here. And that's, I think that is probably the, you know, the the hard deck that I have, is having that day allows me to provide teachers with the first unit of the year, and allows me time to work with the reading review team and pilot teachers, so that in addition to the training that's provided by each one of the companies, our teachers have some insight around what does a getting started actually look like? And from their experience, what are the must knows right out of the gate? So that when teachers, if they so choose, want to look at the resource over the summer, and when they look at that first unit, they have that, you know, getting started guide, so that they're fully aware and have access to those resources. So if we can, if we can get it to that spot where I can still utilize that last PD day, I think, I think we're in a good position. All of our companies, as I worked with them, they've been able to provide us, every time I ask them for, we're gonna extend the pilot again, because we didn't, still don't know, they've been able to react to that pretty swiftly, so getting those physical resources in our teachers' hands, I'm anticipating will be something that they'll be able to do for us.
What's our target PD day?
April nineteenth.
So not, not the day before school starts?
Correct. The other benefit there is, we will have the in-service days prior to the start of the school year as the second, you know, kind of layer to this, where we can use our trainers from each one of the companies to provide that in-person, grade-level-specific support to our teachers. So it's, it's just that rolling implementation piece, where a good portion of the professional development that our teachers experience at the K five level next year will be around the reading resource and what the, the curriculum map and understanding by design process looks like for each one of those units, and making sure that they have time on each one of those days to overview the unit. So when we think about the in-service days, they have an opportunity to overview, what does it look like? And what are our goals for September? And then they have a September PD day, and then they can do the same thing, overview, forecast forward, what are we looking for until December? Because November's kind of a short month, we don't have a PD day there. But the board also did approve teacher workdays for our elementary teachers for next year, and part of the recommendation on my side for that was knowing the lift that our teachers will have next year for this reading resource, that I think providing them that time will be beneficial. And they have one that's early in the year, in October, where they can spend part of that time using that to, to help them understand the resource and overview the educational goals that they're looking for.
Getting a little nervous as we continue to push this, and we've discussed it, I think it's circumstances out of our hands, but to ensure the right financial path forward for the district, we have to, have, have had to delay this off. It's helped us provide some more data, which is a good thing, some better conversation, or continued conversation. But it's nice to hear we still have our window where we're not, by the way, school starts next week, here you go. We're well, well still ahead of that, with it occurring, potentially occurring at the end of this school year, moving in through the summer and then to the start of the school year.
And, you know, once I meet with teachers, so this is in the next couple of weeks, I mean, we're gonna be ready to go once we have that additional information, and the board will then be able to make that decision with all of it on the table, knowing what Act Twenty and the recommendation from the Reading Council is, what our teachers have come forward in terms of their data, what our students have provided in terms of their data, so that there's a, there's a pretty clear picture of how each one of these resources has worked in Germantown.
Great. Any other questions? Jake, do you have anything else for us?
That's all I got.
Okay, appreciate it. Item seven, new business, I'm sorry, item six, unfinished business we have done. Item seven, new business we have done. Item eight, take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Siggenbath with the motion, Mr. Pollack with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned at six thirty-four PM.
The Germantown School District, or School Board meeting to order January 22 at 7:00 PM. Item one, official meeting notification, Mr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the Superintendent's Office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notices also have been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Item one B, we will take roll call and then conduct a pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Ewok.
Here.
Myself Barney is here, Loth.
Here.
Pollak.
Here.
Higginbotham.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Medved is absent, excused.
I'll rise if you're able for a pledge allegiance in a moment.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Tom, with the motion approved, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item three, reports. Item three, a district administrator update, Dr. Chris Quinter.
Thank you. This evening, actually today was a teacher workday for staff as they concluded the first semester, as our students did on Friday, and tomorrow we begin second semester. So that is eighteen weeks of school remain in the school year. Hopefully the weather cooperates moving forward. I'd like to honor two students who have graduated at semester as GHS students, the first being Ricardo Pavon, and the second Connor Barney, son of Tom Barney. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
This last, over the last two weeks, Mr. Noack and myself have conducted focus groups with teachers from across the district in multiple disciplines as continuation of our compensation study, and we will be bringing our findings and themes from that compensations, those focus groups through personnel next month in February, and then a full report to the board. And some great news, February starts Career and Technical Education Month, and State Superintendent Dr. Jill Underlay and her team have reached out from DPI and they'd like to do an onsite visit the morning of February 5th to watch our programming in action and honor our school for the great program, programming it has. So we're excited to host and highlight our great teaching staff in those departments, as well as the great work our kids are doing. So just wanted to make that public as we enter Career and Technical Education Month in February. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Item three B, student representative report.
Good evening. Okay. New year, same fantastic adventures over at Amy Bell. January is buzzing with excitement as the students embark on a journey of learning and enjoyment. Winter map assessments and classroom evaluations are on the horizon to track academic progress. This month's character trait is perseverance, a quality we emphasize daily in the classroom. Students will explore ways to apply perseverance, not just academically, but also at home in extracurricular activities in various aspects of their life. But it's not all about hard work. Fun awaits the students, from popcorn Fridays to amazing animal presentations to school-wide assemblies and field trips. There's fun for everyone. And let's not forget about their annual Super Bowl challenge, where students and staff can place bids by bringing in boxes and bags of soup and vote for their Super Bowl winner. Excitement is in the air at Amy Bell, and let the fun and learning contend. The comments are excited about the snow at recess. This month, they are focusing on their character trait of perseverance. Teaching them the importance of perseverance at a young age sets the foundation for future success. Popcorn days are adding an extra dash of enjoyment this month, and the grand finality is the PTA movie night. The students can't wait to snuggle up and enjoy a movie and create lasting memories with their friends. Happy New Years from MacArthur. Last week, they joyfully celebrated student growth and achievement with the snowflake scavenger hunt. This creative initiative aimed to recognize success by rewarding classes that followed expectations and found all the hidden snowflakes around the school. The friendly competition added delightful atmosphere to the building, ensuring that continued learning, students from kindergarten through fifth grade, will undergo their second round of map testing this month. To add to the festivities, the school will also be celebrating General MacArthur's birthday on Friday, thanks to the support of the PTA. At Rockfield, the new year is all about embracing perseverance. They're guiding to students to understand the significance of development, developing tools to navigate challenges, encouraging growth in moments rather than giving up. Throughout the month, students will learn various strategies to overcome difficulties. These strategies encompass deep breathing, movement breaks, flexible thinking, and goal setting. Happy New Year from the Crusaders. The Crusaders jump back into the swing of things to start off 2024. Today marks the start of second semester, so the teachers and students are eager to see what their new classes will bring. KMS students are gearing up for the American Heart Challenge on January 18th and 19th during their PE class as part of the service learning program. The learning vibes are strong at KMS, extending into after-school activities. Boys' basketball and wrestling are in first, full swing, with the key club collecting over fifteen boxes for donations to Friends Incorporated. The science club convenes every Wednesday, and the KMS ski and snowboard team is eager to hit the slopes with over 140 members. Excitement fills the halls at GHS as students and staff gear up for their new semester. With the semester exams wrapping up last Friday, everyone is eager to dive into their new classes and make the most of this upcoming year. The winter sports season is in full swing, keeping our student athletes engaged and our school spirit soaring. Last Wednesday night, high schoolers involved in athletics and activities organized a co-curricular fair for the incoming freshmen. Witnessing the next class explore their future options was thrilling, but before we look ahead, GHS is determined to finish this year on a high note. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a lot. We appreciate the report and the effort that goes into it. It's great to hear from the student body and what's going on around the district. So thank you very much. Three C, Amy Bell Elementary School presentation, Ms. Cole.
Hello, good evening. So I brought three of my teachers here tonight to talk to you a little bit about their student learning objectives. I'll just give you a little bit of background, and then I'm going to turn it over to them so they can talk to you a little bit about specifically what they're doing in their classrooms. So you can see, part of our educator effectiveness is that teachers are creating student learning objectives. They're measurable goals that are created for student learning. We take our map assessment, we just finished taking the mid-year map assessment, so a lot of the learning objectives were based on fall map data, along with classroom assessments. The teachers collected the data and were able to identify a target group of students, a portion of their class, or it could even be their whole class, that they wanted to focus specifically on, and then created a plan that aligns with the standards and the curriculum. And then along the way, we're monitoring student progress. So our set of map results that are just finalizing was a way for them to take a look and see the progress that they were monitoring, how that came out on a standard measure. So I'm going to start, I'm going to hand it over, and we have third grade first. So I have Ally Wondry and Tammy Keesling. They're the third grade team this year. We have two sections, so they're going to talk about what they did to create their learning objectives, and specifically about some of the data that they have from their classroom.
Thank you so much for having us. We're excited to come here tonight to share with the board the progress that the third grade has been able to make during the first semester in reading. The third grade team is currently piloting the Wonders reading program. There is an oral reading fluency component for both whole class and small group instruction. As part of the pilot, we administered the beginning of the year oral reading fluency placement and diagnostic tests to all third graders in mid-September. This showed us their words correct per minute, which is abbreviated WCPM, so you'll see that on a slide in a little bit. Oral reading fluency is important because fluent readers don't have to concentrate on decoding. Instead, they can focus their attention on text meaning. Oral reading fluency has consistently been found to have a higher correlation with reading comprehension. Using the norms that Wonders provides, the average or the fiftieth percentile for the words correct per minute at the beginning of third grade is eighty-three for a third grade level text. The test results revealed that twenty-three of our students scored below the average for oral reading fluency. After discovering that sixty-two percent of the third grades scored below the average, Tammy and I decided that this was an area that we must focus on to help our third graders become better readers. And because of this data, we created this SLO statement. By the end of the year, students in the target group will increase their fluency to meet the beginning of the year norm, which is that eighty-three words correct per minute. Students have been meeting on a weekly basis in a small group setting. Part of their small group instruction focuses on fluency. Instruction has been given on accuracy and expression through explanation, modeling, practicing, and applying. Students have been given differentiated genre passages in the small group. Students frequently and independently practice to increase rate, accuracy, and expression. We have assessed the target group four times since the initial assessment to track the students' progress. Tammy and I are very pleased with the outcomes so far this past semester. Our targeted students have improved their fluency rates since September. Most students have significant increases with their rate, and the average increase was sixteen words per minute. We're also encouraged that thirty-nine percent of our targeted students have met or exceeded the end of the year goal within the first semester. We are very fortunate that we have small class sizes. Tammy has eighteen students, and I have nineteen students, so we have more opportunities to have individual conferences with our students. During these individual conferences, we provide the students with powerful feedback on their accuracy, rate, and expression. The students are very proud of their progress and are motivated to further improve their, their rate and their fluency for the second semester. Thanks so much for letting us share our students' accomplishments with you.
Thank you.
I'm going to introduce Chelsea Level next. She's teaching fourth grade. Fourth grade teachers, their whole team focused their SLO on key ideas and details. They found that was an area that needed improvement based on their fall map. So they created their target group from students in the low, low-average category for that specific instructional area. You can, on map, you can delve into instructional areas, and that was one that they found students needed work on. So I will turn it over to Chelsea, and she can talk a little bit about how she worked on that with her class.
Thank you. Like Katie said, I really looked at my map data from my students in fall, and by looking at the areas where they needed the most extra help, I created my target group, which is four students, that scored significantly lower on the key details, or key ideas and details category. So thankfully, due to my lower class size, I was able to meet with this group two to three times a week for twenty minutes a session each. So right here, this is an example of what a lesson would look like. It takes a week. So there are, the focus of this particular lesson that you're looking at is focusing on repeating words to help students determine what the main topic is. At the start of the lesson, we talk about the strategy that we're going to be working on, do a warm-up activity together, and then after the warm-up, students have the opportunity to independently practice what we just talked about, and during this time, that also allows me a chance to informally assess them to see how they are applying that strategy on their own. This next slide is actually examples of one of my students' work. The left-hand side is the warm-ups. So in warm-up one, that is one that we do completely together, and then in warm-up two, it's the same task, they just do it independently. So in one and two, there's a short paragraph, and they're asked to pick out one to three words that they're noticed are repeating a lot. So in the first warm-up, they're talking about dogs, smell, and scent. So the main topic of that paragraph is dogs. And then warm-up three and four, this would be the next day that I'm with them, where they're still reading a paragraph, but then instead of picking out those repeating words, they are using that strategy to then just tell me the main topic of that paragraph. The right-hand side then is what we would do next, where they get a passage, and there's little checkpoints on the left-hand side that they're asked to do after they read a certain paragraph, to again point out what are those repeating words. So in this one, clearly it's about mosquitoes. And then at the final end, they're supposed to create a title that would go with that passage that relates to the main topic. Can go ahead to the next slide, thank you. So what I did is that I then was able to really dig into my fall and winter scores. At the top is their overall math score. So this is including the key details, including vocabulary, and all the different components of math. But the bottom, I was able to take it one step further, and as you can see, my students did a tremendous job in this category, with one of my students bumping up their score twenty-four points, which is a fifteen-point-one percent increase. So they've been working really hard at this. They're also very proud, and I am extremely proud of them. This particular group, I am going to continue doing this with them, even though they did score so well and they clearly showed growth. I just want to make sure that they're maintaining these skills and not just doing it for a little bit and then working on something else. So I'm, like I said, I'm extremely proud of them for what they have done, and I cannot stress the importance enough of smaller class sizes, because this allows me the opportunity to meet with them more often and for a longer amount of time, to really give them that one-on-one attention that they deserve to help them become better lifelong readers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of them?
Doesn't look like it. I just want to say thank you for coming and giving this presentation. Typically, when we see a building presentation, we get the kids in here. It was fantastic to hear from the staff and kind of highlight the work that goes beyond standing in front of the students, and working with Jake and the curriculum learning. It married these two discussions and what we had earlier this evening. It really helps the board to understand, and the community to understand the totality of the work that's going on. So thank you for bringing your team in, and thank you for coming. Three D, GSD Annual Assessment Report, Mr. Mizziak, Ms. Leeson.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to present the annual assessment report as we did last January. The purpose of the annual report is to provide a snapshot of the student performance and indicators of student achievement and growth. So each section of the report includes student performance on assessments and key information related to the interpretation of those data. And tonight in the assessment, we will highlight some key components of the report. So the first thing to note is our overall state report card, and on the screen you can see projected the annual performance for Germantown over the last four years. Again, one of the concerns that has been in the community at large, and it's kind of been a national discussion, is the impact of the altered education that took place during COVID, and then shortly thereafter. And you can see that as a district, we're continuing to grow, and we've increased in terms of our overall district score. The overall district score contains four separate components: achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track to graduation. At each one of the levels, those components vary slightly. Achievement and growth and target group outcomes remain the same. At all of our buildings, where on-track to graduation is scored slightly different. All of our buildings where on-track to graduation is scored slightly different at elementary, middle, and high school. In terms of the weight that the state provides to those categories, the biggest difference would be in the area of growth. Growth is impacted by the proportion of students who meet criteria around socioeconomic status. So as that proportion of students increases, the proportion of the pie that our state report card scores for growth then increases as well. So MacArthur has our highest proportion of students from that category of socioeconomic status. So the growth portion of their pie is the largest. So these are the four areas that are represented on the state report card for all of our buildings as well as the district. This year, if you were to do a comparison for achievement growth, target group outcomes, and on-track to graduation, those four areas, we saw increases from last year to this year.
Okay, this table shows the ACT score for the past five years. One thing to note is last year, the '22-'23 school year, it was the first year that our 11th grade students took the ACT online versus paper and pencil. And you will notice that there was no dip in score, so we're excited about that. We are consistently above the state average in all areas for the ACT. And you'll see that we even increased in some areas from the prior school year. This graph, these charts show our pre-ACT secure. So pre-ACT is taken by our ninth and 10th grade students. It used to be called ACT Aspire. Last year was the first year of the pre-ACT, and the state switched it so it was more closely aligned with the ACT. The experience is very similar for students and actually staff proctors. And you'll notice that our students scored above the state average in all areas as well. The ninth and 10th graders do take the exact same assessment. So we do expect that the score for our ninth graders to be lower because they have one less year of instruction when they're taking this assessment. This next chart shows our advanced placement scores. Any student scoring three or higher is considered passing. Last year, we had 85% of our students pass our advanced placement tests. And we also saw an increase in the number of students taking advanced placements tests for that school year.
And each one of the individual scorecards that you see for, or state report cards that you see for our buildings, they have this table that's included for each one of the buildings. And then this is the district-wide summary for the forward assessment. So you can see overall as a district in both ELA and math that there's a common trend in terms of the number of students that we have that are scoring in the advanced range. Colorblind, so I'm not going to tell you the color on the bottom of that chart, but whatever color that is, a shade of blue maybe? Blue? It's blue above it too? Purple? So the blue and then the purple, that represents our students who are proficient in advanced. So as a district, when we're looking at trends within buildings or we're looking district-wide, that's the trend that we want to see. We want to see that that bottom portion of the graph that represents advanced is continuing to grow as well as the piece right above it, which represent proficient. The other component that we can look at is the, obviously, you're going to see decreases in other areas. So our students who are below basic, which is represented by the top color, we're looking for that to reduce over time as well. When we get our scoring from the state of Wisconsin, those areas are, you get different weights for each one of those. So you get zero points for the students who are in the basic column. You get a half point for students who are basic, a point for students who are proficient, and then a point and a half for students who are advanced. And that factors into the overall scoring that our district receives for the state report card.
Okay, the next area that we're going to share with you is our NWEA MAP assessment. So our teachers talked about how they've been using MAP data to analyze student growth and achievement. So MAP is given three times throughout the school year, in the fall, winter, and spring. And this is the first year that we've rolled it out to K-2 students as well. Last spring, we piloted the MAP assessment with K-2, and we decided to move forward with administering it to now K-8 across the district. Our kindergarten students only take it twice a year, starting in the winter. So they had their first MAP assessment this month. This graph shows the past three years of data collected through our MAP assessment. Now, just be, we just rolled out the K-2. So this chart shows us first through eighth grade, but the next chart I'm going to talk about only shows us fourth through eighth, and I'll talk about that in a second. This is projected proficiency for reading. And what projected proficiency means is predicting if our students will be proficient on the forward assessment, which is taken in the spring. So you'll notice we have three years of data divided by different schools. So each color is a different school. And you'll notice that in reading, we see our students are about, about 40% of our students across the board are projected to be proficient in reading on the forward assessment. Now, Jake and I did some analyzing of this and comparisons, and we found that this tends to be a conservative estimate based on what we actually see in forward. And we actually get a higher percentage of students who are advanced and proficient on the forward assessment in the spring instead. And this is the same graph, and this is for math. So again, projected proficiency on the forward assessment in the spring. The math is more closely aligned to the scores that we see on the forward assessment, usually within a couple percentage points. The next two charts are achievement and growth for our MAP assessment. So this is where we're only looking at students in grades four through five and then six through eight for Kennedy. The reason why we're only looking at those grade levels is because this report looks at students' growth over the course of one year. So for example, we'll take the fall score for 2022, and then we'll take the fall score for 2023 for the same student. And it will tell us if they met or exceeded their growth goal that was projected. And using this data, what we do is then I, we compile the percentage of students who met or exceeded that growth goal. So you'll notice there are three years' worth of data. And in three of our five schools, we had over 70% of our students meet or exceed their growth goal, which is great. And then this is for reading. So the first one is math. And then you'll also notice that there was a significant increase in the past two years of students achieving or exceeding their growth goal in reading.
And at this time, Julie and I would take any questions that you might have regarding the assessment report.
Mr. Boni?
Just looking at this last chart and seeing the jump from, you know, I'll just pick up county line, from 33 in 2021 up to 53 and then to 63.8. Do you have anything to tell us why that may have happened? You know, what the jump was? Is there change in curriculum? Did we do something different in the classroom?
Julia had pointed out, one of the significant differences last year is we did focus a little bit more on the MAP assessment and that data. The 2021 school year, you could make an argument that the education that students had received the previous year may have resulted in a little bit of a disjointed education. And what you might be seeing there is the recovery piece. As this is three years' worth of trend data, it's nice to forecast that. And we will continue to gain more and more data so that we can look at this more longitudinally, especially when we look at our younger students, so that we can see those cohorts of students over time. So with that information, we could, we could start pointing to certain things. So if we went to next year, when we're taking a look at the implementation of a new reading curriculum, we can point to that as information for, are we seeing the growth that we anticipated for this? Is there an implementation dip that we're noticing where there's, our, our growth data doesn't seem to mirror what we anticipated? At this point in time, there wasn't a significant adjustment in terms of the curriculum that teachers were using. There have been work at each one of the buildings in terms of their engagement with things like the science of reading, where they've, they've focused more heavily on some of the core components of that. So that could potentially explain the, some of the shifts that you see. But you're, you also might be seeing the rebound from that disjointed education that they may have received.
From the COVID year?
Yep.
Got it, thank you.
Do we have any information from the 2019, 2020? Because that would give us, you know, is that because there was, you know, the learning from home, online learning? Because is there that jump, or was it before? Was, you know, were we in the 60s at Amy Bell? And you know what I'm saying? Was there an actual drop? We just don't have that information to know.
We don't have that data. We have some of our data from the forward exam, so you can, it's not, again, it's, this is projected proficiency, so you can take a look at how we were scoring on the forward exam to see that there, there was a dip that had taken place from the pre-COVID to, you know, the years following. But then, within all of our schools, you're seeing that recovery of more students on forward being proficient in advanced.
Because what's interesting is you didn't see that decline in math. Math pretty much stays, you know, consistent throughout, so I guess it, I found that.
The, so one of the other things to consider with, with growth is it's students hitting their growth target. So that's taking each student individually wherever they're at right now. So if they experience some learning loss, it would take that start value and then project forward the expected growth for that student. So growth versus achievement might look a little bit different in terms of those graphs. So the achievement part, you can look at in terms of forward. For growth, we have to take that individual student data to see how much they've grown. And it's relatively tough to do when you're using forward data, given the forward scale changes with each grade level. So the scoring isn't one-to-one. There isn't like a useful comparison for students other than were they below basic, basic, proficient, or advanced because of the score shifts that happen from grade level to grade level. So measuring growth in individual students using forward is not something that I would recommend.
Additionally, NWE did a research study post-COVID a year after to measure learning loss based on their national norms. There's a higher rate in the United States of learning loss in reading than in math. So when you look at this math chart, you see it leveling off more because the rate of loss wasn't as great as in reading because of many factors, the type of instruction that was occurring, engaging in, you know, rigorous work, those types of things. So the NW will even say nationwide, the regression in reading outweighed the regression in math during the shutdown in that period of time.
Taking a look at the reading scores from 2021 to 2021, '22 across our elementary schools, three of them are pretty much in line with each other with a recovery of 20 points. One of the schools has recovery doubled. It'd be interesting to see what happens specifically there, or if that low number in 2021 is just an outlier or bad data. I mean, anytime we have three schools within the same standard deviation and an outlier, it looks to be a very good success story. That's the kind of stuff we want to be focusing on and replicating if there was something that attributed to that.
Anybody else?
Well, just in trying to kind of understand this, if I'm understanding this correctly. So when you do the projected proficiency, so say for, you know, for Amy Bell for 23, it says 41. Is that we think 41% are going to hit projected proficient?
Proficient or advanced.
Okay, so then, but then we look at the achievement growth, and it's 61. Does that mean 61% of the 41 hit there? Or does it mean we've actually done better than what we projected? 61% are now proficient?
So for growth, a student could hit their growth target, but maybe they started out in the below-basic band of the forward, and then they jumped up to the basic band. So they made, they could have made a lot of growth to go from below-basic to basic. So they would hit their growth target by MAP standards. So MAP, you can say they're measuring their growth. How much did they grow versus proficiency is just an achievement level? So did they make that achievement level? So you might see a student not really grow at all, but they were proficient in third grade, and then they were proficient again the, the next year. They may have even kind of reduced within that band. So what growth measures takes into consideration where the student is coming in. So you could see a lot of movement within each one of those areas. So they're, they're measuring two separate things. So how much did the student grow within that year? And then whether or not they reached that proficiency level. And like Julia said, what we're noticing with MAP across all of our buildings is reading tends to be a little bit more conservative in terms of its projections, in terms of how many students are proficient in advanced. So if you were to take any one of these schools and then compare it to their state report card, the, the projected proficiency that you see, for example, at Amy Bell, is underneath what they actually achieved in terms of the number of students who are proficient or advanced on the forward. For math, it's a little bit, it's pretty close in terms of what MAP is predicting.
So let me take a look at some of the, like the forward data. And anytime we see growth in the lower end there, the low portion of the graph, I mean, the blue and the purple, that, that's higher achievement. Anytime we see shrinking in that yellow and the orange, specifically in the, like, the not test, meaning someone didn't take the test, it looks like there are more people potentially involved in it and taking the test. That's all, that's good, right? And the, the other numbers that we're talking about. But I think it's important to remember that we, we layer all this data over itself. Because we could say, look at all this great work we did in forward, and if we went back and found out all we did was teach the test, then, then we probably failed our students, but we have great forward scores. So that's why I think all of the data that's involved here and the layering of it and the understanding. I personally don't think we teach the test. So when I see this growth, it's organic, it's, right? It's from the process that's developing, which is a good thing. I do like to see the numbers that we are seeing. Obviously, we always want to see, see and push more, but I think it's indicative of the process that's going on throughout the district and the intent that's being placed honestly throughout the district in improving across the board. So it's, it's great data to see. It's encouraging to see. It's a portion of what we use to analyze what we have going on. The layering of it definitely helps understand it a little bit better.
And that, the test participation is something to note. So Julie and I worked with principals and then teachers last year to increase the number of students who were taking the forward exam. We had noticed that we disproportionately had a higher number of students who were in special education, who were opting out of taking the forward exam. And then we've, we've doubled down on the importance of why this data is important for not only our district, but for our teachers to help understand student growth. So the number of students that you see there that did not test, that has gone down significantly. That's more students who have IEPs who are now taking the forward exam, because that was the largest proportion of our non-testers was a student from that particular group.
Anything else for us? Anybody else?
Well, I appreciate the information, the report. As usual, it's fantastic, in-depth, and continue to grow in that aspect. Do you have more to continue with that, or are you finished?
Okay, thank you. Item four, citizen comment. I have two. We will start with Heather Peake, who she has an informational announcement for us.
Hello, everyone. I'm just here to do a quick plug for our upcoming winter play Murder on the Orient Express. If you haven't heard of it, it's a murder mystery. We have about 40 high school students involved with it. They're working really hard. And it is going to be right here at the PAC, not this weekend, but the weekend after. We have a show Fri-, sorry, excuse me, Saturday, February 3rd at 2:00 p.m., one at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. on the 4th. So if you're interested in seeing it, invite your friends and like it on Facebook and share it. And get your tickets online from the PAC website.
Thank you. I have one more. Ellen Coulter.
Hi. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I didn't actually have anything really written out. But in regards to the open enrollment spots and the thirty additional five K seats, a couple of points I wanted to make is I was just wondering if you guys had considered the additional developments that are happening all around Germantown and whether or not, how many children might be enrolling from those additional housing projects that are, that are coming up all over Germantown that I'm seeing? So that was my first point. And secondly, and more important to me, I guess, is the special ed comment here. It says, in the packet, it says that the specialized services are already at capacity. So students with special needs will not be accepted. I just wanted to point out that I have three kids in Germantown and I had two kids that were on IEPs. My daughter was put on an IEP after kindergarten because she needed additional speech services. And she was on that IEP all the way through elementary school. My son was put in an IEP in second grade after he had got diagnosed with ADHD. And he got diagnosed with anxiety. And I'm actually happy to announce that he's in eighth grade. And just earlier today, he was removed from that IEP from our amazing special ed teachers here in Germantown. So some of those diagnoses aren't actually known before entering school. And that would be two-thirds of my children. So sixty-six percent of my family had been in the IEP after the five K grade. So those are just some things I wanted to point out and make sure that you guys were considering. But as always, thank you so much for everything you do. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Item A, approval of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
Let's take a bathroom with the motion. Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda B, approval of teacher resignations.
Tonight, we have Laura Supernan submitted her letter of resignation on January fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Laura was hired in August of two thousand twelve as a science teacher at Germantown High School.
Thank you. As far as any particular reason why or attempt for retention that you could give us some insight on?
Yes, we spent considerable time talking about this situation and the departure of this teacher. This is a teacher who, in her over twelve years of time, especially in the most recent years, has evolved into being a department leader. She holds a dual certification, as well as she's involved in many extracurricular activities and is well-liked by students. So we're very concerned about this. We collectively discussed an offer, a considerable increase to salary in an attempt to retain.
Okay. And I apologize, we didn't have our personnel committee meeting. So I'm going to take a little time here on this topic. For many of the reasons I think you, you just cited, we're kind of sad to see this, this direction. This teacher taking, choosing resignation. It sounds like she's joined another district. Sounds like, for the conversation, there was a great deal of attempts for retention. We just weren't able to get it done on that side of it. I do appreciate, I know we've talked about in that committee creative solutions to this. And I think this is a, the approach to the retention attempt in this was considerably different than prior. So I think there's a notice to be served on that end of proactive, reactive to the situation, however proactive in, in the, the style and attempt for retention. Do we, as far as replace?
Yes.
Direct replacement. Do we have replacement, anything like that?
We are very close to securing a, a teacher. This particular packet is completed middle of the week and late in the week. And Friday, we have secured a teacher. We just need to go through some background checking and physicals and those kinds of things to secure the teacher. This is a first-year teacher who's completed student teaching. It's an excellent opportunity for, and we're excited about the opportunity. At the same time, as we've said, it's difficult to see an experienced teacher leave.
Absolutely. I appreciate the update on that. And it's the swiftness we were able to bring somebody in. Obviously, we're going to lose the, the experienced side there. You'll have time to address that end of it as we continue forward. But knowing we have somebody coming in, in that timeframe is better than we have.
Yes.
So it's an improvement in that. So I appreciate your hard work on that. Does anybody else have anything on this topic? With that, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the resignation of Laura Supernan and thank her for her service to the students, their families, and the Germantown School District.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion. Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? See and done. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Approval of teacher contracts. Item C.
Thank you. We have one contract coming forward tonight. As was just referenced, this was based on resignation that occurred at least a couple of months back. This is for Amanda Hunt, an English language, an English learner's teacher. So serve multiple schools in the district. This is a one-point-O limited-term contract for ninety-nine days at thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. This teacher comes to us with strong experience in neighboring district as well as at WCTC. We're very excited about what she has to offer and she's extremely excited about being here.
Fantastic. I will entertain a motion. Move to approve the limited-term contract as presented.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion. Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? I'd just like to say, I appreciate that. It sounds like this is not an entry level. Teacher has some experience coming along and the enthusiasm that she's going to be bringing into the building is going to be fantastic for us. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item D, approval of donations.
This evening, we have five donations. Let me read them as follows. Pigly Weekly has donated one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents to the Germantown High School Athletics and Activities. Badger Land Striders Running Club, three hundred dollars to the GHS Boys Cross Country Team. Germantown Area Chamber of Commerce donated two hundred dollars to the Germantown High School Marching Band. Rockfield's PTA donated for playground equipment valued at three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And Warhawk Band Boosters donated three thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars for transportation of the GHS marching band. We'd ask that you approve all donations this evening.
Then I'll take a motion.
Motion to thank the donors for their generosity and approve the donations as listed.
Second.
Take a bow with the motion. Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
Just, just for clarity, the Badger Land Striders was three hundred and fifty. I think it was stated as three hundred, three fifty, three fifty, just for clarity.
Appreciate the fifty.
Yes, we do.
Uh, anything else? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. We are moving on to item six, policy committee. Mr. Barney, I believe you're going to have the comment.
Yes, Policy Committee met last week Monday. We discussed two policies that are both coming forward with recommendations. So I move right to our next board item, six B. This policy is policy twenty-five, twenty-one, the selection of instructional materials and equipment. And this policy is being revised to include the definition of instructional materials and instructional equipment to distinguish between the official curriculum provided to the students as opposed to teacher-created lessons, plans, content, and various forms of media. So Committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the updates and modifications to District Policy twenty-five, twenty-one, selection of instructional materials and equipment with the edits as discussed at committee.
It comes forward as a positive recommendation. We do not need a second. I would open it up for discussion if there is any.
If I could just add, there's also, not that their board approved, as they can change at any time. But we did include in the packet administrative guidelines that the District Act and I worked on. And that's something we'll continue to add to as we move through curriculum.
Now, I would like to add, so I'm, I serve on this committee and there was some interesting material in here. And as far as continued food for thought, I think we may have missed an opportunity to provide a level of transparency within some of our supplemental materials that are mentioned in this policy for our community, the parents, students, for this board in, in general. I don't have language I would like to recommend in order to support that, that effort of transparency right now. I would like to see that the committee potentially bring this back as kind of a furthering conversation around that. I know you're the committee chair of that.
Yes, certainly. I guess what I would recommend is move it forward as it is tonight so that we have a policy in place. And then next time Committee meets, which I would imagine will be later this quarter, we can revisit that and discuss your proposed language.
Sure. It would be great.
And due to me, the Niola, the middle, end of February, with the next round of spring policies, which we'll chunk out so we don't have sixty of them in one night. But this can be added to the list. And as I've shared at Policy Committee, I think this is one that Niola will continue to revisit so much with some other policies as things evolve across multiple districts.
Sure. Yeah, I think it's, it's a, the reason why I wouldn't provide language now for it. I think there's a, we need a better understanding of the cause and effect of what that potential language could bring. Not only did the, the district administration, but our staff on a, on a burdensome level. So we'll continue that conversation. I appreciate the openness for that. So if nobody else has anything on that topic, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
All right. The next item, item C, approval of proposed policy twenty-one, thirty-three class size. You had an initial look at this at our board meeting in December. Committee took a second look at it last week and did not make any changes to the proposal. This is essentially the, the district procedure that has been in place, but now it's being solidified in policy. Having in policy will allow the community, parents, and staff to understand our class size expectations as well as assist the administration and the board with finalizing staffing and budgetary items that we have to do every year. From a high level, I will go through the policy. At four K, the desired class size is twenty-one or less students. At K five through grade two, the desired class size is twenty-three students or less. Grades three through five, desired class size is twenty-five or less. And at grades six through twelve, across core academic, coordinated arts and electives, the desired class size is twenty-seven or less. Band and choir will have varying class sizes based on coordination between the teaching staff and administration so that they can meet their objectives and expectations. And the policy also calls out special considerations that may be necessary. So with that, Committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the new Germantown School District Policy twenty-one, thirty-three class size.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Any discussion? I just have one point on that. I've received a couple of questions in regards to this over the last couple of weeks and since the committee met. I think it's important to note, we're not racing to these numbers. The goal isn't to be, to fill every class to this. But, but it is to set a structure, a known structure for the administration to, to move forward with and continue on planning. But that was probably the number one concern I heard, obviously, and we, we've heard it tonight, right, with class size. I don't think that's the intent. So I know we can read into this a little bit about, let's race to twenty or twenty-seven. I don't think that's the goal here in, in an honest fashion. So I just wanted to clarify some of that. If nobody else has anything, I would take a vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That will pass.
Nothing else from Committee?
Thank you. Item seven, Finance Committee. Mr. Loth.
Yes. The Finance Committee met earlier this afternoon at four-thirty PM. The meeting was just about an hour long. So this is going to be what I call the Cliff's Notes version of that meeting. Ms. Wendy Unger with Baker Tilly presented the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three financial audit. There were no findings and really the audit was very good. We have a excellent business manager, so we were kind of expecting that. Next item is twenty-twenty-four mileage and meal reimbursement. This is full board item this evening, seven B. And the Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-four mileage and meal reimbursement rates of sixty-seven cents per mile. Breakfast, twelve dollars and fifty cents. Lunch, seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Dinner, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Not need a second. Is there any discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Okay, next item. We went over the vouchers. There were a few questions on vouchers and we approved those. Next item, we covered, Brittany covered her variance report. And the last item was a property tax review. So I got a few calls, why are my property taxes going up? I really can't do it justice here, but the Finance Committee meeting is recorded and you can see the whole meeting. This part of the twenty-twenty-four property tax review is towards the end of finance. So if you're really interested in that, skip to the end. One thing that has happened, it's not the only thing that has happened, but we have inflation. So taxes are calculated on inflated property values. And taxes went up a little bit, not bad, but a little bit this year. And that's all I have.
I appreciate you bringing that discussion forward in that committee. I think the nuances in school board finance and Eric can probably attest to that. Some of the conference training he just attended this week, the nuances are vast and important. So thank you for pushing that conversation through in your committee.
Yes, even I learned a few things or had a few things clarified for me this evening. So it's a good listen and listen carefully, you know, if you choose to do so.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you. I will, item eight, Teaching and Learning Committee. That was me. That was this evening. I'll kind of give you the Cliff Notes as well. That one went over forty-five minutes, almost an hour, I believe. Two topics, both just reports, no decision-making needed, but hopefully some impending. So we're going to start with the academic and career planning updates. Obviously, last time, year about this time, we heard on pathways and the continued work around that. I think we're building some structure to that in accordance with some state statutes as well as, outside of the requirements, the intent and purpose is being given its due diligence to push forward a more robust program. So we learned about our educating for employment and our portal, our portrait of a grad. Both of those things will work, one as a guidance and second as a follow-through rating, less outward to the student and more internally for staff as far as we're setting goals and seeing if we're meeting those goals or what, what portions of the goals we're meeting. seeing if we're meeting those goals or what, what portions of the goals we're meeting or where we may to, may need to reemphasize or refocus. I won't go into the, all of the details on it. Please give that a lesson as it's a continuation from our pathways discussion from this time last year.
Mr. Yurek, I'm sorry. I was fixing this projector. Did we approve from the finance committee, letter B, in real, in mileage reimbursement?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
We took a vote. Yep.
It was technical difficult.
Just not for you then, I guess. Thank you for clarifying that. We then heard on the reading pilot update, the committee's worked extensively on this. We're in report number five, which is two more than I think we intended. We've kind of clarified why that is. The good news is this time around, the state has provided us, the three that we have been piloting do make their cut. We are waiting for one more data point, which is reimbursement or grant eligibility for those. And that'll be a portion of the decision. We found a, had a lot of data provided to us this evening. One being around the teacher evaluation portion of that process, not only from a, what they, what the evaluation was, but they took a in-depth look as to what, what they were evaluating in each category and did that make sense? Is that the totality of what we wanted to look at? We found a couple of things out through there. All the programs seem to be good, or we're probably in good hands with any one of them. Each one may have a, a shortfall here or there, but we found that that could potentially be a, a process. So Jake and his team were able to rework the data that was collected and kind of reverse engineer it as to what could we increase those scores or what was the potential cause of those scores? And it seems like they found some pretty specific and finite things. I think it's a good, it's a good opportunity to see in both directions what could potentially work and what couldn't and what we could do to improve those areas. So we'll continue to look at that. It was also a great way for the, the evaluators to provide upwards leadership and information and input into that. So we appreciate that. We found parental feedback as well, which is fantastic. Couple of the programs, one of them I believe was a little more, I won't call it forced, but communicative towards the parent or the household than the others. And we're thinking that may be why we found more participation because it was more forward-facing to those households than some of the others. So we'll continue to monitor that as well. We have MAP scores, which will receive that data that we can compare specific to kind of before and afters of participation in the pilot program. We'll have that coming. We are looking for, no decision tonight unfortunately on either of these as the reasons stated before, but we are hoping in the next month, potentially to have that brought forward to finance for an expenditure decision and then ultimately the full board approval following that. We appreciate all the hard work that continues to go into that. We'll note the, does seem like the extended time that we've been allotted thanks to the state is a slow process of review. It has allowed us a little in-depth, further in-depth process. So I think we're in a good position as we move forward. And that is all I have on that. New business, item nine, a discussion in action, twenty-four, twenty-five, open enrollment seats. Dr. Reuter?
Thank you. This evening, after consulting with our now loose policy related to class size, consulting our financial aspect, working with my assistant, Melissa Timmerman, we are proposing thirty-six open enrollment seats at the kindergarten level, not specified per building, as we look to monitor our enrollment numbers. That is a number higher than this board has ever been brought before. The rationale behind this, we look at our projected enrollment, our current four K population, what we expect to come possibly from the private sector, our current staffing plan and our capacity within buildings. We currently have eight sections of four K or eight FTE, and at five K we have fourteen. We have two teachers on limited term contracts due to additions the board approved in late August when we saw an enrollment spike. At this time, we would need to most likely moving forward, even though we'll continue to monitor enrollment, either lay off current staff at the elementary level regarding the low four K going into five K and/or move teachers around, which is not the best staffing model to consistently move teachers from grade level to grade level as they, they start to master a grade level and then they're moving elsewhere. So we have, we have looked at historical data over the last three years. In twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we had a hundred and twenty-seven applicants for open enrollment in the district spanning five K through twelve. Only sixteen of those were for kindergarten. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a hundred and ninety-four applicants for open enrollment in the district. Only fourteen of those were for five K. And in this past year, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had a hundred and forty-nine total applicants and only twelve of those were for kindergarten. Something my team does every Monday morning, we pull a data report from Skyward and enrollment data report for projected for next year so we can monitor four K and any new possible residents for the upcoming school year. Our, our kindergarten numbers projected for next year are staying steady as of this report at a hundred and forty-six, which is our roll-up from four K. We have not had any, to my ret, my knowledge, Mr. Mizziak, you pull that data for me, five K new enrollees. So our, our idea to bring forward thirty-six seats is possibly two full sections, but they would be dispersed throughout the district as we see lower amount of kids coming into the district. This is part of birth rate recession. Every school district has seen this at the early grade levels. And, and I know it's, it's a larger number than the district's ever brought forward, but we think the recommendation is positive for stabilizing grade levels so we can build a consistent staffing plan to be consistent with our staff as well as from a budgetary standpoint, be consistent with knowing a projected average enrollment year after year versus a fluctuating enrollment. Additionally, Mrs. Callen and I have spoken, we would not be allowing any new open enrolled students in the, of those thirty-six that currently, or that would have an IEP from early childhood or four K. And at any student, we have the right under policy and state law that any student who open enrolls into the school district, regardless of the grade level that you approve a seat at, if they qualify for an IEP after that, they can be, we, in order to receive services, they'd have to go back to their home district because it's undue financial burden on the school district and they came in under a different pretense as a general ed student versus a specialized student. That would be an administrative decision based on resource allocation and current caseloads of our specialized state.
I will open up this for what is undoubtedly a topic of conversation. Mr. Barney?
Of the current open enrollment students that we have, do we see a higher level of disciplinary issues with them compared to resident students?
I would have to dive into that, but our open enrollment numbers are so low historically. Like last year, we approved, I believe, I guess it was like less than ten seats total and they weren't even all picked up. Since I've been here, it's been less than ten. So comparison to the other thirty-nine hundred kids, I would say there's probably more disciplinary issues with the population of thirty-nine hundred than a handful. We, the last two years have been only a fifth grade open enrollment, which the argument to open enroll at kindergarten, not only to stabilize staffing and class size and number of sections in each building, we also get kids into our system very early on. So if there's any need for, to intervene around academic or social progress, it happens early on versus at older grade levels and they're put into the system. And now they may have been in a neighboring district for six, seven, eight, nine, ten years and to change that mental model or shift around academic and their whole child aspect is much more of a monumental task for our staff and a utilization of our resources versus early on where they become part of our district even though they don't live here.
Where I understand the reasoning for, obviously for low on our enrollment for four K, five K, but again, the fear is if the district, the village is planning on adding housing, I know they were doing a big housing to see what kind of housing we need, whether it's apartments, you know, next gen housing, and we all of a sudden now have a big influx of students where we aren't doing, you know, as we say, we have thirty-six seats available, but as they, you know, go through the school, you know, for a second now, so we don't have room for them. Now we've, you know, it's, what, are we doing justice to even those kids coming in that now there is no more room for them and they have to go find another school? So I guess, you know, if we can somehow work with the village and see what kind of, you know, residents who are coming in so that we don't put students in a, in a bad spot.
I, this afternoon, reached out to village administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, DPI does allow us to add, come back in June to add seats because after the open enrollment window has closed, based on our current, our current student population or enrollment at that time. Is that correct? So we could, we could tonight, if the board chooses, it just might be difficult with our staffing plan and forecasting forward as middle school and high school students have selected classes for the fall over the last month. Now we start to cascade down from the number of FTE needed at middle and high school based on electives and core courses. And then that, our last piece of staffing is at the elementary level and we determine based on enrollment, but also the total number of FTE in the district that we'll bring forward to in the next month or so for you approve, to approve contracts. It's going to possibly lead, as I said, to preliminary layoff notices to, it could be to a couple, couple of teachers in the district. But we do have that option that if you were to not approve any seats this evening or a minimized number of seats, we could come back in June and open it back up for more seats. But, but with the caveat that people who have already selected their school for open enrollment have been accepted, that pool might shrink. And that's why I wanted to share that historical data that we've had no more than sixteen kids apply over the last three years at five K.
I'd like to add a little context, I think, to that number. So prior to moving to the village, we were an open enrolled family. And we understood, and through that process, you picked three, okay, three, three districts and three only, and you rank them, one, two, and three. It was widely known within the circle of some of the city workers that I worked with that you do not waste one of those spots on Germantown. So as, if we were to open thirty-six spots in one grade, and obviously that message would get out that we're open, I would think those, those that asked enrolling numbers would jump astronomically because I know I would have. I spent time with kids in two different school districts, Sussex and Germantown, and they both, or Sussex and Monominee Falls, and they both did a good job, but ultimately it wasn't the district we wanted to be with. We just knew it wasn't a good strategy as parents of open enrolled students to attempt to come here because of the low offer rate. And you mentioned in regards to a student coming in, we wouldn't be asking, we wouldn't be allowing anyone with a special education track. I would agree with their citizens comment from earlier. I think a lot of those situations are probably found out down the road. And while legally, we're, we are probably have the right to ask them to go back to their originating district, ethically, would that be the, the best solution for the student at that time?
I know it's a common practice, so.
Taking the, taking the financial side, and I'll get to the financial side of this here in a second, but ethically, I, I, where would that process lie? Is that with you as the administration or the board providing you that, that authority? Or you would be asking us to make that decision?
That would be with administration. We look at current resource and then determine if it is feasible. It's a common practice in other school districts that you were not accepted under that term. It's going to cause undue stress on our, our resources, human resource and financial resource.
I, I would look at it in this light, and I don't know if I'm in the minority on it, but we'd be asking them to come in and their enrollment while I would call it in the easy process of education would be a financial benefit to the district. But as soon as that financial benefit flips to a burdensome approach to the district and because it gets hard, we would then ask them to leave when they need it the most. That would be a difficult decision, I think, to make.
We currently have students who came in under open enrollment over the last fifteen years that have qualified for specialized and have not been asked to go back to their home district.
The district's practice, current practice?
Previous administration's current practice.
So lastly, the financial side of this. If we're, if we're saying, I've got two questions here. How is it that they're only at kindergarten that we have this lack? Or you're looking for utilizing that?
We're looking at a long-term versus a short-term.
Utilizing that to push through over the years?
To stabilize building up because right now we have oddities in our number of sections based on enrollment where you might have a two-section track or a three-section track at a school in first grade and then second grade's four. So we're going to have internal movement again this year because we have these odd number of sections year after year. The goal is to stabilize.
I'm hearing you on that. Obviously, I think that stabilization would be more noticeable at the elementary levels, right? Versus once they're dumped into the middle school and then back into the high school. So we're, I would look at this more as that track of elementary that we're looking at, trying to stabilize, not the entirety of the system. Next year, if we project the same low enrollment, are we now not on a loop to continuously add open enrollment and add open enrollment? If this community doesn't come through with the housing and the family migration we're expecting or potentially hoping for? So I feel like we'd get ourselves into a looped track of continuing just to simply boost our numbers when our own population is telling us, we don't support this level of staffing. And while absolutely unfortunate, the tough decision on the staffing side would then have to be made, we wouldn't be trapped into that. And I've seen in other districts, I've had discussions with other boards around open enrollment and some of the runaway aspects are trained that they can kind of get themselves on because that money coming in is now needed to stabilize, not only for staffing, but the entirety of the budget. The third part of the budget side of it would be, we would receive less dollar per head coming in through open enrollment than we would through a natural student, right? Natural enrollment student?
So that, I'm sorry.
We would receive less, less. My understanding was the dollars, the district, the home district would have to pay, our district is less than what we would receive for our own in-district student.
The state rate is eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars per head.
So it'd be short of the eleven.
Correct. That's.
So now we're not only in a loop of needing to continue to add those students to maintain, but we're doing it at a reduced rate and then we're taking our taxpayers' money to make up the loss in that eight thousand to the eleven thousand mark.
Correct. The thing, the other risk we run is we could be running class sizes, though we heard tonight, and I agree, to keep them within range of the policy, but also lower class sizes. We could risk running at, like this year, we have one section of four K at one of our elementaries. We could risk running class sizes like fifteen, fourteen, two sections of that versus, or once, changing the policy and running a very big class. So we have to weigh those factors too moving forward, given our enrollment trends at the lower elementary. As more kids are graduating, bigger classes are graduating and are coming in.
So my question is related to the assumption of current and next year's enrollment projection. We're, we're simply assuming based on the numbers provided that, that we'll retain one hundred percent of the four K students, which I think is a reasonable assumption. And though I think we've done an excellent job of marketing four K, which by the way,
Of current and next year's enrollment projection. We're, we're simply assuming based on the numbers provided that, that we'll retain one hundred percent of the four K students, which I think is a reasonable assumption. And though I think we've done an excellent job of marketing four K, which by the way, four K enrollment is. Is open and we have an open house coming up at the end of the month at all of our elementary schools. Do we foresee, or what was the thought process by assuming that? There are zero four-year-olds not in our program coming into our district?
There's, there's not, we, we don't have a handle on how many are staying in private schools. That offer four K, five K and on, as well as, um, we're working to get the number of enrolled. Four K students in private, non-religious institutes. So like a daycare provider, because they don't have a choice next year, they can't go to five K in those providers. But we don't have that clean data because this, the village does not have. I've worked in districts where you get census data and you can project out from birth to four K. Within like eighty to ninety percent accuracy, we don't have that here. So we're going on assumptions and our best cause is just roll up data.
Going on assumptions versus educating assumption.
Right, versus data informed decision making as we have many presentations this evening. I under- I understand your, your objections to the proposal. I just, we're, we're looking at it administratively as stabilization, retaining quality people. And, um, making sure we're maximizing our space, but, um, your thoughts are noted. And you, you, like I said, we, you could decide this evening to. Accept no open enrollment seats and then we reconvene around this topic in June. Once, um, the open enrollment window closes and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, she told that for me today. Once the open enrollment closes on June seventh, then. We have not filled any seats because you didn't approve any, then we could open seats if we see that Amy Bell's running a section of. You know, two sections of twelve kids or whatever it might be. Are we going to allow at least six seats there to up those class sizes? Because, alright, MacArthur, they're running twenty-five and or twenty-four, they're maxing up the class size policy. That's the other thing is the distribution across the district. That's why tonight's recommendation was not for specific schools like it's done in the past. Because we don't have to determine schools until June. It was for grade level. Because then we can monitor enrollment per building and distribute accordingly to level the playing field with class size.
This is very much a hypothetical, so I understand your answer could be very vague. But obviously in the village, there's been more development in certain areas than others. And so if, uh, if we run into this situation where we fill these seats and we get. Higher than expected, meaning we, our assumption here is met and exceeded. How do we handle situations in general where, I'm going to use MacArthur as an example, where we're full at MacArthur. But we have residents in MacArthur area. So we, if the assumption is is those that are open enrolling in would be placed in MacArthur. And we have this influx in the MacArthur school, then we, we get to shift.
We can put the open enrollment kids wherever we want. The resident students within their boundary, that's their homeschool unless per policy, they reach out to me directly and saying. I really like my child to go to X school, then I work with the principal, we look at class size and demographic. And we do and don't approve those, but those are few and far between. MacArthur would be probably the last school we distribute to because there is apartment complexes and we see, we, again, since I've been here, we monitor. Summer enrollment and we see an influx at MacArthur in August as that's the new time for leases to come forward. So right now, I believe in Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy Bell, we have three sections of kindergarten. And we are projecting two next year. Rockfield, we have three sections of kindergarten, we are projecting one. That is why we're most likely the distribution goal with possible sprinkling here and there at County Lane and MacArthur.
What's the deadline for us to approve open enrollment seats for the current?
The January board meeting. By, by the conclusion of January.
Okay. So if we wanted to. Take no action tonight and try to get more information from the village, we'd have to reconvene before the end of the month to finalize it.
That's why I would recommend you don't approve that we can reopen if need be versus approving. If you're not, if that's not the will of the group, but. I, I, my, my belief in our administrative team is that. The number of seats we will be able to manage and distribute across the district this coming year.
I support this, it's different than what we've done in the past, but I think it's a somewhat bold idea. I, I believe what Chris is saying, it's a way of kind of stabilizing the school district. We're here to educate students. And I think it's a good idea if we can start them early in our district. So why would we deny, uh, students in need, you might say, to start here in kindergarten? I think it's a good idea and we should go ahead with it. One question I have, is there any additional state aid that comes in besides what we get from the other school district? You know, that would be the result of the September head count.
So when we do the head count, we, um, see how many students are sitting in our seats that day. For both, um, September and January. We then subtract all the open enrolled students in. And we add in all the open enrollment students out. So our funding is based on our resident students, not necessarily the ones that are sitting in our seats. So the other school then gets to count them because then they pay us, does that make sense? So we will get the eleven thousand dollars for a student that open enrolls out to us, out from us. But then we will have to pay the other district the nine thousand-ish dollars. So we will keep two thousand dollars. Vice versa, if they're coming into our district, but that is not state aid, that's revenue limit. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Also, um, transportation is provided by the family, we don't transport. And additionally, there's truancy law related to open enrollment if you are found truant, which is ten or more days of unexcused medical. Or family excused, um, absences. You ha- and we run a truancy meeting, um, which our principals do a very nice job of that. The student then the following semester loses their open enrollment status and has to go back to their home district. And so every time about this time of year since the semester. Melissa reaches out to the principals, does an attendance count on our current open enroll to make sure they're complying with state statute. And if they're not, we pull in a truancy meeting and they lose their open enrollment status. So there's expectations related to attendance and once you're in, you're not just in.
If we follow through with that at an administrative level, I would assume years would.
Yeah. Because they're, they're not here and we're responsible for them. So if they're not a resident, then we don't need to be responsible.
We did, you, you had mentioned internal district open enrollment, meaning, uh, contact you, your administration team. For a family that would like to be in a different building. So if we have an Amy Bell and a Rockfield with diminishing enrollment. While they have, I'd say diminishing enrollment, I would project the village is planning on housing developments to go into those areas. We've already seen buildings start. And one, the one thing Germantown does have is area for residential growth. They've mentioned they're done with the first round of, I won't call it the first round, but the. Plan side of adding jobs, building, manufacturing, that type of thing. And now they're going to focus on residential. So we have that coming, right? One way or the other, that's not tomorrow, that's a projected growth. But the village does have that as we see towns like Monomony Falls and McQuonan fill their available land. Districts such as Sussex Hamilton and Germantown have the available land in lot sizes desirable by many. Going back to where that started. Doesn't that offer us a pressure relief valve for some of our overpopulated or more populated? Elementary schools such as MAC and County Line? Internally? Couldn't we offer our internal, which would also then help. Maintain, uh, staff level or normalize staffing, stabilize it at Rock and Amy Bell? Internally with, with, with our kids within this district?
Yeah. However, there's no transportation provided in that respect, so. You're, you're saying if families can provide or have the means to provide their own transportation, then they, they can move inner district. But if we see enrollment, I always put when I work with our principals, caveats around attendance. They have to be in good standing, attendance and follow attendance policy and provide their own transportation. And if there's a spike in enrollment, that make the class size larger than expectations of this community and our staff. Then you're moving back to your home district.
But within our district and given the vertical alignment.
So if some, uh, MacArthur family says, I really want to go to Amy Bell because, and they have a sound rationale, not because. Russ is friends at the school, but we used to live in that neighborhood, now we've moved and it'll be there last year at Amy Bell, we want them to go to fifth grade.
But I'm saying proactively as a district. This isn't the families asking, but we float, we have open enrollment here internally within the district. We've heard complaints, I've heard complaints on this board, not only about. Student population size in, in those other two schools, but also the start time of one of them.
Sure.
We may have parents that could jump. All, all over that potentially, obviously if we're not bringing both kids or all of the kids across different grades, that's a different story. But I'm just saying, there's, there's an internal option to apply an open enrollment, more so than there's an external. And if we would come across one of those situations where we would say, okay, the spike has occurred. We need you to return to your home school, we've now brought that vertical alignment from school to school. That that transition for that kid wouldn't be nearly as difficult. As well as we'd have the easier flexibility because it's an internal district that open enroll. Open enrollment, I'll call it.
Internal district transfer.
Transfer.
That's the name of the policy.
Versus an external open enrollment in which we would have to find cause.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying and the logic behind it, I would just throw caution at that, that policy is ready for special circumstances and not. That's why we have boundaries, right? And, and that could lead to then a high fluctuation because I don't like the start time at a school. Or I don't like the teacher at this grade level, which that's not the purpose of the policy. Purpose of the policy is for special circumstances and the three that we've approved in two years. They've been unique circumstances, maybe split family, something like that.
But now it's advantageous of the district to do it, not the family. Or it co aligns advantageously with both, right?
Sure, it, it does lose the concept of neighborhood type schools in the village.
I, I understand that, but we're talking about a unique situation and you're bringing a number that's never been heard in this district as far as open enrollment, so. Before, I would jump to the, without talking about it in totality, right? And every avenue, ability to address it. Uh, I would, given the unknown factors. I would not support. Bringing thirty-six open enrollment students, um, at a level and I, and I truly do believe we run into a risk until our residential takes off. Of having to do it the following year. And even if it's twenty and then fifteen, we're still on a wheel of reduced dollar amount. With an unknown cost based on the kid that's coming. I, I couldn't support it. Anything else?
Understanding the concerns and, uh, hearing Dr. Roder kind of explain some of the nuances with open enrollment and what. We can do if there are any sort of issues that pop up or other concerns that pop up. I'm, I'm going to vote for this. I think in the grand scheme of things, certainly there could be some, some issues that pop up with this and, and other things. But in the grand scheme of things, with some of the information we shared that came from the village, I think that's really our, our. Bigger concern in the grand scheme of things over time, so, um, I'm going to vote for this.
I just feel like more information before we just make a decision on something that we, we don't know. So as far as like I said, what the village is going to do as far as, you know, adding apartments, whether it's next gen housing, whether, you know. To see, kind of have an idea of what the expectation is so that we're not, again, having to. Put a bunch of kids in open enrollment and then all of a sudden now there's not room for them and they have to go find another school. I don't think that that necessarily helps kids. I think just information as far as how do our open enrollment students do? Are they, you know, successful academically, are they successful, you know, are they disciplined? Just kind of having a little bit more information before we just make a decision on thirty-six kids.
I, I would just caution that the provisions under the statute are not, you cannot select based on criteria for open enrollment, it's random draw. So we can provide the academic performance, I don't know that I can go deep into the behavioral data with the board. Because that now specifies our open enrollment students. But that, that could be discriminatory that we're not accepting seats because they don't do well in school. I, I can argue that kids who are open enrolled, now we can get the data. Might exceed our expectations or even the expectations of the peers that live in the residence because they're. Working for something that's an opportunity that wasn't there previously from a homeschool.
Do we have a number of kids that open enroll out in Germantown?
Brittany, would you mind answering that number out?
Currently, there is, uh, open enrolled out, regular ed, a hundred and forty-two. And special ed, open enrolled out is twenty-three.
I, it was hard to hear.
I'm sorry. Open enrolled out, regular ed, because there's two different categories. Regular ed is a hundred and forty-two. Open enrolled out, special ed, twenty-three. I have in numbers as well.
Can you give them, do you have a whole open, do you know the number in?
Sorry?
Number of open enrolled in?
Regular ed, open enrolled in seventy. And special ed, open enrolled in nine.
So we have seventy-nine current students that are open enrolled in and we've lost a hundred and sixty-five out. During the course of their beck and range in multiple grade levels.
So then does that balance out as far as the, if you have about the same number? That are going out as coming in as open enrollment and it kind of balances out that three thousand dollars? That is, you know, we get eleven thousand dollars, right? And then only eighty-five hundred comes in from students, is that correct? You guys were talking about before.
So currently in the budget, we have for revenue, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars coming in. And we have, uh, one point five million dollars going out, a little more than one point five million dollars going out.
I don't know how the vote's going to go, but if we approve zero seats, does that mean next month you're coming to us with? Non-renewal notices for, or a lower staffing plan?
We have, we are waiting for the final draw from middle school and high school registration. Because again, that determines our FTE at the elementary. It sounds goofy, but it does. Based on the number of total FTE we need for what the courses our kids select, both core and elective courses. Then that tiers down to now what's our enrollment projections, which was shared this evening. At each grade level and then we break that down by school. And we look at what's our current staffing plan, who's retiring, is that still, Mike, when is the retirement deadline?
February fifteenth.
So that would play in too, we can't make decisions until after that because we need to know who's retiring. Because that, that all has ramifications to what our non-renewal process would be, which is March.
May.
May, I'm sorry, May.
May fifteenth is final notice.
Which, which enrollment could go up, but it could stay exactly the same at kindergarten through twelfth grade. Or not deviate much, four K is the one that, we had high enrollment in the summer. We've had open house at every elementary for four K and we've had, we've publicized both kindergarten and four K registration. But until things are in target and says go back to school, some parents don't act, they go, that's right, I gotta enroll my kindergarten, or who might have been at momentum. And they don't even have a mental model around school and the timeline. And they don't even have a mental model around school and the timeline.
So we got a couple of questions. Knowing some of the alternative care, private companies around here have held a non-enrollment if you were looking for half day to counteract when we opened four K. And I'll call that predatory, right? A disservice to the community. But I understand why they're doing it. They have a business and they're running it. So I'm not going to get into that side of it. But we have a data set there that we don't know how many that is that will be here for a full day five K that, that are, that have been beholden to that because they didn't have a choice. They needed full daycare.
Right.
For their child. So I don't, I think we're missing a number there.
And that's where if you approve zero seats tonight, we could have a clearer picture with that coming forward.
So then, for this year, I understand this is a move for projection forward. But for this year, for this coming year, how does enrolling thirty-six students at two, at five K across what is most likely two schools and a couple maybe here or there affect somebody in the middle school as far as the staffing?
Well, it, it adds two sections to the elementary where we already know we're lacking kindergarten. Which stabilizes the middle school.
But, but this year, you're telling me you would recommend a non-renewal of someone in middle school because we didn't fill a track or two in K five?
I don't know that in middle school, we have to look at licensure. So we've moved people before.
But do, do you understand?
From second grade to seventh grade because they have a one night license. Is that ideal? No. But we.
But how does second grade and seventh grade play into a decision we're making on K five this year? I'm not saying it doesn't down the road because obviously that rotates through and builds class size as it moves forward. I understand what I'm talking about as far as the staffing plan. How does that come about for the decision making process?
If we are able to fulfill all thirty-six seats, that's two sections. There's possible retirement at the elementary level, where have a couple and possibly a couple more. And then with the, the belief that there's going to be increased enrollment that would at least alleviate such a high number as jump from eight to fourteen when it comes to staffing. A reduction from fourteen down to eight.
Dr. Reuter made reference to the potential overlap between elementary and middle. Of the three levels, that's definitely true. Elementary and middle would have the most overlap. So if there's a shortage at the elementary level and there's an excess at KMS, it might mean reduction at KMS or vice versa. It, it might mean movement of teachers.
But if we're recommending thirty-six at five K, we're not saying we're a shortage at the middle school. We're saying we're a shortage at five K specifically.
It was, it was an if. Right.
But what we're being asked to do right now, and I'll cut to it. Is there staff we want to retain based off of, and the way to do that is increase enrollment through open enrollment? Or are we financially going to listen to what our enrollment data says for our students and our tax base, our tax base? It's not a good decision either way, I understand that. But for this year, how does that? It doesn't, to me, it doesn't. It maintains three tracks at, in the five K, one of which we added last year because of an increased class size, right?
At, at Rockfield, yep. And the others in McArthur.
So we added, we made the adjustment to bring in staffing when we needed it. Why wouldn't we look at reducing staffing when our citizens, our community are telling us we don't? And I'm, I understand the finite and I understand staff's going to take that as they're trying to get rid of us. That is not the case. This is an honest conversation around this while also then putting an unknown jeopardy of thirty-six students in our hands from outside of this community. And you're telling us if they come up with an IP, cut them. So financially, it's okay now.
I'm not telling you we're going to do that. I'm telling you that's an option. It is.
Yeah. But what if thirty-six students? We know the dollar amount, one to one, from a student with special needs to a standard student. However, we want to use the political term for that is drastically more.
Brittany spoke to it tonight, what thirty-three percent reimbursement of a student with an IP, right? You spoke to that tonight, finance, that it costs more with students with IP. We know that. That's, but it's our obligation to service our, our resident students with IP.
Hundred percent agree. Hundred percent agree. But we're saying if we bring them in, we cut them if it became too expensive. If it wasn't financially in our favor to keep them. That's a game I'm not running. Mr. Reuter?
Overall, I support adding some at kindergarten just to give us the opportunity to balance class sizes across our elementary schools. I don't know that thirty-six is the right number. I guess I, I, if you can share, if there is any insight as to how you arrived at thirty-six?
It's two sections of eighteen, but it would be distributed. And it wouldn't be like we had two classes of just open enrolled kids. But in schools where we know our kindergarten numbers are down, we could distribute those kids with current resident kids. It could have gone higher.
I understand.
Based on our current model for staffing, if we wanted to maintain the same.
Yeah, I have to think.
I know it's, it's, this is something this board, historical board members, even community residents, this hasn't ever been brought forward because, one, we never had a class size policy until tonight. And two, the previous formula that was being used by administration didn't make sense. I'll be on the record to say that. We were looking at the average class size of fifteen. So that's why there was never, there was never more than one or two or three or four kids brought forward and always at fifth grade, which still didn't make sense because the schools that they were at were tipping as close to be needing three sections. So this is something that I'm, I was aware of in other districts I've worked in. That we, we work to maintain stability and this is a method. So that's why I brought it forward. This is me. And I understand the, the concerns related to why the caution towards it.
Brittany just gave us the numbers and we've got more open enrollments out, almost double of open enrollments in. So this is a, we should at least be able to even that number. And thirty-six students doesn't even get us to even. So I don't think there's an issue with going with the number thirty-six. As far as the district being overrun down the road, the village could approve a hundred building permits before the end of the week and we're not going to see any students from that for years. We've been down this road before. We thought maybe as a result of the referendum, we would be overrun, you know, by new building and new building permits for homes. And to some extent, building permits have increased because of the referendum. Look at our tech ed classes. We've, we may have the best tech ed facilities in the state right here. So what's happened is enrollment may have not dropped as fast as it otherwise would have, but we weren't overrun with new enrollments just because we did a referendum. So we're here to educate students. I think we should show that we're here to educate students and take the thirty-six. You know, who knows in that group of students who we would be denying if we don't take them? And Chris, or Dr. Reuter, I should say, just said we could have gone higher. So I, to me, it seems like a thirty, the thirty-six is a number that's safe. And if you don't do that as this small K five class, let's say we approve zero. The K five class will be small next year. That wave goes through the school district for the next twelve grades or eleven grades, depending on how you look at it. So just because it's new doesn't mean we shouldn't try it. I think we can try it and reevaluate one year from today. You know, we'll see how it goes.
But the revaluation tool on that is not removing the thirty-six kids without cause.
No, no, we wouldn't do that.
So there's no, you can't reevaluate it?
We would reevaluate if we accept open enrollments, thirty-six more the following year.
If the district's year over year accepting thirty-six enrollment seats, we're financially doing a disservice to our taxpayers.
Not necessarily. There's a couple of ways of looking at it. One thing that's happened over the years is, it, it, it's been a while, so I can't give you the exact number. And I'm not going to put Brittany on the spot to give it to us. But occasionally, we would get an email where the taxpayer says, "I'm saving the district money by sending my student to private school." And my response was, "Well, actually, I support your right to send your students to private school. However, you're actually costing us more in state aid than your taxes are, that are coming to the school district." So it costs us money for every student that's enrolled in a private school. And I, I'm, I'm fine with that. You, you know, if parents want to send their students to private school, that's fine. We need to compete with those private schools and show that we're better. And I think accepting open enrollments, especially when we have an unbalance, I think the number, you're testing my short-term memory here, but I think it was seventy-four in and a hundred and forty-something out. I didn't write the numbers down, so I'm sorry.
Seventy-nine in, one sixty-five out.
Oh, okay. So it is actually about a two to one ratio. I don't know what we're worried about.
And if the, if the thirty-six seems ballooned, I, you know, I, I pulled, and Mr. Reuter, I understand your, your firsthand experience with, don't waste a seat, right? If you, they're, they're not going to accept. But we've had over the last three years, on average, thirteen to fifteen kids apply for kindergarten. So if it is a reduction to one section of eighteen kids and we look at that distribution across the district, that might be a start to this methodology and idea versus thirty-six, which I understand is, is a lot compared to a handful previous years.
Yeah, I just don't see how we get off the hamster wheel if we go down this path. If we artificially inflate our enrollment numbers to maintain staffing, we will continue to have to do that.
Are, are we assuming that enrollment's going to keep declining or come back up and win?
Keep declining.
Keep declining.
I mean, so I just wanted to give some information. We continue, as you are aware, have graduating classes in twelfth grade that are much larger than our kindergartners coming in. So we're in the three-hundredth range for graduating classes and we're in the two-hundredth number of kids coming into kindergarten and four K. I'm bringing them into four K earlier is great, but our numbers are a lot lower as the years are going on in larger graduating classes. I understand the housing, that could happen. It's not, I don't believe going to happen. Once it gets approved, I think it's going to take a little while, as Mr. Loth stated. If we approve thirty-six, the average is fifteen that have applied. So we could, is it fifteen around-ish for the last three years?
Twelve, fourteen, and sixteen. So thirteen point seven five.
So, and I understand the hamster wheel continually, but we haven't had open enrollment in the past and we continue to lose kids on open enrolling out. So I would recommend if we want to go thirty-six, that we start doing something. Because what we were doing had zero data behind it. They literally were just pulling numbers and approving them. There was no information behind why it was the numbers or the grades that they chose. So I think this is a good start. And if it's not thirty-six, I think it should be something. We're doing kindergarten because of the reasons he stated, it's starting from the bottom. Are there spaces in other places of the school district? Yeah, there are, but starting at kindergarten, I think is a good place to start a student off into a district.
So when, when we're talking about kids leaving the district and we have to pay that cost, kids coming into the district, that's what we refer to as shared cost, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that figures into the equalization aid formula.
Well, that's a different shared cost, but yes.
Are, are we negative or positive right now?
We're negatively aided.
So if we're, if we're negative?
Tertiary aid. There's three levels of aid, correct? Tertiary aid, if you're in tertiary aid, you're negatively aided. We are, we're reducing that each year as we restructure our debt, which is another factor into the equalization aid calculation. So each year, we are getting less and less negatively aided.
I was going to say, we'll, we'll see a decrease in state aid.
Correct.
Okay. You, you spoke earlier about the enrollment exemption?
Declining enrollment exemption would have nothing to do with open enrollment.
No, but.
Oh, sorry.
Wouldn't we qualify for it?
We would qualify for a declining enrollment exemption if our three-year average of the September count is less than the three-year average of the prior year September count, not including anything to do with open enrollment. Open enrollment students are taken in and out. So during our count, so what you're looking at, the open enrolled students that leave us are taken into consideration to your count. The open enrolled students that are coming into us are part of that district's count, not ours.
Okay. We, we keep, we, we talk about Germantown, the growth of Germantown. We represent several villages here and there's a lot of growth going in in Jackson also. So I mean, if we're going to follow up with Germantown, we should probably follow up with Jackson, take a look at the growth rates there.
You know, in regards to the next gen housing that the village is discussing just tonight, there's two municipalities that have backed away from it. Jackson is not one of them. Jackson has jumped in with both feet. And they are the first to actually build and launch the housing, housing. But they're, they're actually on the process of building these houses as we speak.
I'm not sure if those are in our district though, are they?
No, but they have vacant land that is.
Right.
And I know the village is, the county's lead discussion is this evening pointing out ten different site locations within Germantown for this same type of housing. Not one location, ten different potential locations. The distinction being Jackson owned their land so they could provide it to that project at a reduced cost. The county would be asking Germantown to procure the land and then provide it at a reduced cost. Won't get into the village politics side of it. I find that to be a little bit of a stretch of ever occurring, given the financial restraints they're under right now. But that's the discussion that's happening and building down the block.
Now, the more I think about this, sure, I'd like to have housing data and new construction data. But I don't know that that has a huge impact on kindergarten because someone could buy a house that has a third and a seventh grader.
Correct.
You know, that doesn't affect what we're talking about tonight.
Correct.
It, it does because those seats are being filled in kindergarten. The housing's going to take place over years. You don't want that mass moving through the system as people move in and, to your point, with older kids. And often we go, we don't have room for our own citizens.
Fifth and sixth graders come in as this thirty-six hit fifth or sixth grade and now we're overpopulated and we're going to expand staffing at that, not.
I'm not sure I can say whether you're for, or me personally can say whether I'm for or against it based on that, but from a risk mitigation standpoint, doing something about it now that you can't claw back or if you do claw back, it looks pretty messy and the optics on that are not good. Or waiting another year, what's the cost break even or analysis on that?
This would be our first year going from the, the, I will call it. I think we have untrue numbers at our four K program. So we'll see what that actually transfers over to five K this year. And I'm not saying do zero. Historically, we, we don't do zero. We do something, to your point and to Chris's point in the administration, that's changed. We make those decisions based off of data which were not occurring before. So we're not ignoring that side of it.
We make those decisions based off of data, which were not occurring before. So we're not ignoring that side of it. Any continued discussion?
I would ask that regardless of the motion this evening, we make sure that the motion states that the current students who are open-enrolled as well as tuition waiver remain here. We don't lose sight of that, so that...
What's the, it's been, what's the average number of applicants that we've had?
Overall?
The ones that have asked that have been denied.
So Melissa, this includes people who applied for 4K last year. We don't even have 4K seats. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two is a hundred and twenty-seven total.
No, no. Applicants for open enrollment, or the historical data that you brought.
For 5K or total?
Five K.
Five K, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two is sixteen. Twenty-two, twenty-three is fourteen, and twenty-three, twenty-four is twelve. Knowing we didn't have seats, they still applied.
So I, originally, I wondered if we could even fill thirty-six kindergarten seats. I don't know that we can, based on what we just heard. So I think we should go ahead and approve them.
You'll fill thirty-six.
And we'll see what happens. I don't, I don't know that we will.
I have a hundred percent confidence. As a parent that went through it, I know the network of parents that, the conversation that occurs, you'll fill thirty-six seats. And if it's thirty-four, I'm sorry.
I think we can handle them. I think we can.
The reason why I asked for those numbers is those are the ones that have applied, even knowing we didn't have seats, want to be here. They wanted to be here so bad that they applied, even knowing we didn't have seats.
Remember, Brittany stated, the graduating classes are all bigger than the kindergarten classes coming in. And this isn't my area of expertise, but I believe that statewide, enrollments are down. Every school district in the state is down. So obviously, there could be an exception here or there, so...
Public school enrollment.
Yeah.
Students are advocating to private school.
Right.
Sixty percent of Wisconsin districts.
And if that's the case, then the community's saying, "We're looking for alternative options to what you're offering, not continue to staff." I don't like the decision either direction it goes, because there's a hard staffing decision that would result from this. I understand that.
Well...
But ultimately, our tax base is what it is, and the children, our potential student base that lives in it is what it is. We can swim upstream and say, "We'll just float it for this year and float it for this year," and that becomes a revolving door. I'm not saying that occurs. They can be very well right, and the housing goes, and it worked. I just don't see it, the balancing act that it takes. We're trying to, you know, thread a needle at that point with a very expensive ramification if it doesn't go well.
But remember, we've got double the students going out that we have open-enrolled coming in. So this is, I don't know how much of a problem that really is, but I think we can start to correct that this evening.
Another way to look at it is, based off projections, first grade is projected for twenty-four, twenty-five, two forty-six. We're projecting 5K, one forty-six. If we don't address this, that, obviously making a big assumption that these numbers don't increase, decrease, but this staffing issue will carry forward several years potentially.
Correct.
So that's the other consideration in this, is, do we right-size the staffing?
Correct. I a hundred percent agree.
I think there's been other approaches from this board. I'll cite two arguments I've heard from this board. One in regards to the village and housing, and the type of housing they're building, and that they shouldn't build certain types of housing, because we don't have the room in our schools for it. I've heard that argument. I've also heard the board attempt to approach a different strategy to enact some and open enrollment, and many districts around us did, through an online academy. I was involved in that at one point and saw kind of the inner workings and strategy behind it. Unfortunately, the administration in place at the time did not have the skills to pull it off. There was some want within the district. Some of the people in this room have worked really hard on that project. And that was a legitimate attempt that could negligate, or could...
Negate.
Negate, sorry, the word I'm looking for. Some of the risks that we are trying to manage while bringing in students without having to worry about overrun class sizes and staffing issues. That was a legitimate attempt. I think there were some within the administration that are no longer here. One at the home that probably had no understanding or very little understanding as to the workings of it, so they couldn't educate, didn't educate the board properly on the ins and outs of how that would function. And another that wanted to turn that project into something beyond a financial asset for the district. Now, we have districts around us that took advantage of those programs, opening, opening, and that's where some of these open enrollment students go, is these online academies. And it might be the right learning system for them. But those districts are profiting while spending low-dollar amounts. They're spending close to eight grand on each one of those kids to have them open and roll. So they're plus money. The downside is, isn't, isn't there. This board has done some work in this area. It's not an easy decision. Any other discussion?
Brittany?
I do just want to say quickly, when I started here three years ago, I looked into open enrollment, and open enrollment out. And I also looked at it in my other districts. There's, when families move into a school district, they usually obviously move in because of the community and what they like about the area that lives in. If their children have already established friends at their past school district, you'll see that that's why a lot of people open and roll out. So they could move into the developments that are here, and they could continue to open and roll out to their original school.
And we have, I know of situations that we have in our school where people moved out of the community but kept their students enrolled in our district.
Correct, as long as we accept the open and rolled in.
So I mean that, I'm just saying it works both, both directions.
Correct. That we just have more going out, so they would say that more are living here, because it's a great community, but keeping their children's relationships.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think we have three options on the table for you to decide tonight. Either make a motion to vote on the recommendation, make a motion to vote on a reduced number, or make a motion to vote on no seats and revisit in June. After June seventh, after we, the open enrollment window closes, to determine if we're going to reopen our open enrollment window for those who apply at whatever grade level we so choose, specifically kindergarten.
I think we do need to address, obviously, the, you know, the lower enrollment. Obviously, we need to keep our student count at a relatively consistent level. But we kind of talked earlier, is this going to be a trend where every year we're adding thirty-six more students? We're trying to, but if enrollment is going down across the board, across the state, at some point, there is going to be a reduction in enrollment anyway. So at what point, how, how long do we keep this, this going, as far as adding open enrollment students? That we want to try and keep it at, you know, two hundred and forty students a class? Or at some point, are we going to have to accept the fact that just enrollment is going to be less, because there's less kids in the state? So when do we kind of, do we do this now, where we, instead of doing thirty-six, we do eighteen or twenty, just add one class? And then to kind of see where we go, instead of, you know, at some point, we're going to have to address the fact there's just less kids? So I would be comfortable, obviously, adding, you know, we could talk about just doing one class of kids.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve fifteen new open enrollment seats at 5K for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the addition for applicants, existing students already attending Germantown schools that have moved to approve the zero special edu, and moved to approve the zero special education seats for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Okay, so...
Any discussion?
Yeah, we've got fifteen here.
Fifteen's the most.
Fifteen, you said. Will we still have an opportunity to reevaluate in June?
Yes.
We always reserve, we always reserve that, right?
Yep. So this allows for, if it moves forward with a majority vote, it'll allow fifteen seats at kindergarten in the district. That could mean five kids at each school, or, sorry, that's terrible math. But it could be distributed across five schools. So it could be, you know, four kids, five kids, and four kids at each school.
Given the track size, I would assume we'd be focused on two schools.
Correct. And then, and then...
If not one, given the number we approved.
Yep. It's not going to be one section. But then, Michael, to your question, we'll come back with staff, where we're at from enrollment report in the June board meeting, and we can open up the recommendation, open another fifteen seats, or what, ten seats, whatever it might be.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, that passes. Okay, that was item A. Nine B, discussion and action, twenty-four, twenty-six administrator contracts. Dr. Reuter.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm recommending this evening, the outlined administrators for, to enter the district, I'm sorry, the board to enter into contracts for the two-year contracts as the max allotment per state statute for the twenty-four through twenty-six school year, at their, no less than their current twenty-three, twenty-four salaries. There's an attached contract that's been reviewed by Eagle. Any necessary changes? The first reading took place with the board previously. And there's one administrator missing, it's Mr. Rooney. I didn't share it tonight, I just stated his name. He started this year. He's the only administrator not on a two, the current cycle. Everyone else is up for this year. So rather than issuing him a one-year contract extension, next year, I'll bring him forward for a new two-year contract as well. He agreed to that. He's doing a great job. There's nothing wrong with him. But he's the only one not on the same cycle, and to keep everyone else on the same cycle.
I understand he was approached to see what she would be more comfortable with.
Yes. He gave me the thumbs up. I said, "Here, now it isn't your job. You're doing a great job."
Yeah. Please, nobody read into that.
Correct.
Any discussion? About a motion?
I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the administrative contracts for Germantown School District administrators presented for the twenty-four, twenty-six school years, with salary increases to be determined after July first, twenty twenty-four, and an overall percentage amount determined by the board, and individual administrator amounts determined by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion. Miss Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Mr. Loth?
I'd just like to add that all the administrators' salaries are public record, and they are published here in, you know, this particular packet, just like the teachers' salaries were published at our last board meeting. That's it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, that passes. Nine C, discussion and action approved, DECA overnight travel request. Mr. Reuter?
Yes, the State DECA competition, Distributive Education Clubs of America, also known as the Association of Marketing Students, will be competing February twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth in Lake Geneva. Twenty students and two advisors will be going on the trip. Students will be paying for the registration and lodging and transportation costs, which is outlined here, along with all their advisor expenses, will be covered by the Germantown School District using the GHS Athletics Activities Budget. We're looking for approval of overnight travel this evening.
Take a motion.
Move to approve the overnight travel request for twenty students and two advisors to travel to Lake Geneva from February twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, to attend the DECA state competition as presented.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion. Miss Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? I have one question. On the applicant form, date submitted to building principal, date submitted to superintendent's office, those are blank. Are they just not on this copy, or?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
For the dates submitted to building principal and dates submitted to superintendent's office, those dates are blank on the overnight field trip request form.
Oh, I'm, that was submitted, this was submitted last week, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, correct. It's blank. It was one of the things, it was one of those where it popped up. We have kids qualified, rushed to get it into the board packet and agenda. So I believe it was Wednesday of last week, the eleventh hour.
I think we can mark it as an incomplete, but...
Yep. We'll take some points off, but no.
Beyond that, I just noticed that those were empty. These forms, sometimes we get them handwritten, sometimes we see them typed out. I appreciate it's typed out, because I can actually legibly read everything that's on here.
Yeah.
Other than the two missing dates, which are generally irrelevant, other than finding. Mr. Loth?
Yes, I wish to commend Dr. Reuter for defining DECA. I was trying to come up with some text or some words for that. It would have been, I'll let it go. But I love these type of events. They'll be, for the students that participate, they will learn a lot on this trip. I guarantee it. These are great events, and I'm happy to see that we've got students participating.
And then Mr. Martin, consistently, as a group, I, every six months, it seems like we're approving a DECA, I think.
Yep. Yeah. I would echo Volso's statements. It's fantastic.
I believe, when I was in high school, I participated in this, but it wasn't called, I don't think it was called DECA then. I don't remember the...
Might have changed over the years.
Acronym. Yeah, it was just a, you know, a couple of years ago.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Ten, closed session. I'll undertake a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty point eight-five, so one subsea to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of an employee. A, district administrator contract. B, personnel matters.
So moved.
I'll second that. Mr. Martin with the motion. Mr. Pollak with the second. All in favor?
Roca.
Sorry, Roca.
Ewart?
Here.
Myself, yes. Assuming it's a yes.
Yes, I agree. Yes.
Loth?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
Brown?
It's my understanding we intend to exit out of closed into open.
We can wait here for action as needed.
Post discussion here if it's needed. So stick around if you'd like, otherwise, thank you for coming. Please drive safe. We are in closed at nine eighteen.
Check.
Germantown School District Board of Education is entering back into open session at 10:16 PM. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the Administrator contract for Christopher Reuter for the 2024 through 2026 school years.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Barney, and a second from Ms. Higginbotham. See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will take a second motion.
Motion to approve the resignation of Thomas Kuava effective January 19th, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against or any defies? See and done? That passes. I will take one final motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Ms. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Loth with the second. Any discussion? See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:17 PM. We are adjourned at 10:17 PM.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against or any defies? See and done? That passes. I will take one final motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Ms. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Loof with the second. Any discussion? See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:17 PM.